Vancouver.
Game starts in Boston.
Just curious, so our Mayor's Youth Advisory in the audience, how many people want to see Boston win tonight? Show of hands.
How do you not go with them?
How many want Vancouver? Show of heads. Okay, all right, let's see, let's see.
You're sad man, sad man.
What's that? Okay. First off, can I have a motion for adoption of the minutes? Moved by Counselor Peter Angel, second by Counselor Maves. Any discussion on the minutes? Seeing none, all those in favor. Thank you. Are there any disclosures of pecuniary interest? Counselor Maves?
Yes, I have a conflict in the general insurance program. That's L 2011-12.
Okay. Any other? Moving along. Deputations and presentations. And we've got a big group of people wearing blue tonight. I think I have an idea why that is. Members of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee are here to update council on their past activities. And I understand, do we have one specific spokesperson for doing that? Aaron? Two. Okay, if you'd like to come forward to the microphone. Introduce yourselves, if you will.
Your honor, members of council, my name is Aaron Bailey.
And I'm Yashvi Shah.
And we are the co-chairs of this year's Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. Just to start, I want to apologize, I'm a little bit overdressed. I actually came from a grad luncheon at school directly here, so I didn't plan on wearing this tie. Again, I want to wish my sincere some apologies to Counselor Ian Noney. She watches the Boston Bruins lose at home. Serves them right for playing a dirty game, but not going to get into that.
That's right, yeah. I like this guy, I like this guy.
I think we actually have a PowerPoint up here somewhere. It's opening right now, so as that comes up, we'll get right to it. So again, Mayor DiOdati, members of council and guests, we are honored to be here this evening to present on behalf of the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. Again, my name is Aaron Bailey. And this is Yashvi Shah. We're the co-chairs of this year's Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee.
The Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee is a group of about 20 students, four from each high school, and collectively, we strive to make Niagara Falls a better place for the youth, more youth-friendly place to live, to volunteering, event planning, and advising city council.
At the beginning of each new year, the Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee gathers to grow as leaders and become acquainted with one another through our leadership orientation. Held on Queen Street, the committee worked with our life coach Tina in team-building exercises that you can see up on the screen here.
And aside from events such as Leadership Day, we also volunteer with various other events and initiatives in the city outside of our own. So biannually, we strive to volunteer out of the cold, both for kids' sake, which we usually do with Mayor Jim DiOdati, and a number of other events, like we have adopted a street Morrison that we clean up biannually, and just to raise awareness about various issues within the community.
So, in an attempt to become more in tune with the needs of young people in Niagara, this year's Mayor's Youth opted to run a youth forum, similar to the one that we held way back in 2001 that resulted in the McBain Skate Park outside of the YMCA there. We invited 100 students from all schools, backgrounds and interest areas, where Mayor's Youth sought input on how our committee could work towards improving the city for the youth.
We will have a final report for you, if you don't already have it, as to what actually came out of the youth forum. Three initiatives were highlighted, and we will be passing that down to next year's committee, just as kind of a guide when they're doing their annual plan meeting, to see where they'd like to see things go in Niagara Falls in terms of the youth.
After a long day of organic brainstorming and discussion by the 76 attendees that we had come out, a total of eight issues emerged originally. These issues were then organized and displayed on our website for voting at fmyac.com. The top three from this online survey, as Yashvi mentioned, emerged as the issues that Mayor's Youth will be focusing on for years to come. These three, I think we actually have a slide for them coming up, or not. These three were: improving the entertainment and retail options within the Niagara Square for youth; building a more youth-friendly transit system in the city, which is actually an initiative going on through the Transit Ad Hoc Committee; and also building a more entertaining place where teenagers can participate in leisure activities, so a teen hang out of sorts.
Organizations such as Niagara Square and Niagara Falls Transit has been contacted or shortly will be contacted by us, just to let them know that this was a huge issue among the youth, and we just felt that it was a responsibility that if it had emerged from our forum, they should be informed or advised of this. So one of my main goals this year was to draw attention to the negative stigma, or not the negative stigma, to support the RFP that went out to the multi-pad receptacles. A hot topic for this city, except for my export, were the next year's team on this awesome initiative. Sorry.
So as a part of our environmental advocacy piece for the year, we focused on the support that the city had already shown in putting multi-pad receptacles on the streets of Niagara Falls, especially in high-traffic areas that affect youth, where we see a lot of litter and recycling garbage that should be either in a landfill or recycled properly. So through our earlier presentation to council, based on this issue, we've been garnering support from certain groups in the city and meeting with city staff to work on this. This is going to be an issue, as Yashvi said, that's going to play through to further Mayor's Youth Advisory Committee. We're going to be working on that next year and for years to come. Our Battle of the Bands, which was a staple event for Mayor's Youth, it was our ninth annual this year. We held it at the Optimist Club on April 2nd, and it was a huge success, as always. Four student bands competed to be crowned champions, based on judging by prominent names in local music, in front of a crowd of over 200 students and music supporters. In the end, Civil Hades from West Lane took the title, marking the first time in the event's history that the trophy will be displayed in a public school, with over the last nine years of being displayed in the two Catholic schools back and forth.
And the committee hopes that with this win, we're able to reach out to a bigger demographic in terms of the public schools, because, like Aaron mentioned, it had been about nine years of the Catholic, eight years of the Catholic schools always taking the title, and this year it'll be able to kind of turn the table. Teens on Queen was actually our newest event this year, and as we wrap up this year, we just, you know, we thought Queen Street was definitely one of our biggest concerns, especially with this negative stigma that is attached to it. We were able to gather, just from just an eye count, we thought of at least 1,500 students to Queen Street on June 2nd, on June 3rd, excuse me, and we had a number of bands. We had Keet come down from Ottawa, Street Pharmacy, The Rockswalls, Manhattan Project, there were four stages all across Queen Street, and we think, we believe that the part of the huge success was our partnership with Spring Licious. Infrastructure that they had set was definitely one of our biggest assets for Teens on Queen, and yeah, that was definitely one of our biggest events of the year.
Actually, the Spring Licious Committee, who we partnered with, mentioned that it was the busiest Friday night they've seen out of the entire event's history, so that's something we're very proud of, bringing the students down there, showing them what Queen Street has to offer, and allowing the students to show their skills through culinary demonstrations and artistic performances as well. So as we wrap up this year, we would like to thank you for your continued support of Mayor's Youth. Both Yashvi and I are moving on, but we do owe a ton to our time on the committee over my three years and Yashvi's four in the past. We have grown immensely as leaders and are thankful for the opportunity to make a difference here in Niagara Falls. We hope that over the next few years, you will continue to support the voice of young people in Niagara, as since you have seen, we do have the capability of making a difference, and we really value your support on all of our initiatives. So thank you very much, much, on behalf of all of Mayor's Youth and our moderators.
Thank you. Now, Aaron and Yashvi, did you want to share with the council where you're off to?
I'm going to McGill University to study biomedical science.
And I will be going to the University of British Columbia to study combined honors in biochemistry/chemistry.
Pretty incredible. Another thing I always remind our Mayor's Youth Advisory, because these are the leaders, they're going to be the ones that'll be running the city when we're done, hanging up our gavels. We always tell them, don't forget where you came from. Gather all the ideas, all the resources, all the tools you're going to need, so you can come back and run the city for us. So, thank you very much. Were there any comments from anyone on council? Thank you very much for all the committee, for all that you've done. We appreciate it very much. We know there'll be some new leaders to step up, and they've got a big pair of shoes, or a big couple of pair of shoes to fill, but I know that you have been developing a lot of talent. We look forward to the new crop of Mayor's Youth Advisory, and we wish you well as you go off into the big world. Like I said, remember where you came from. Thanks very much.
Thank you.
And just before we have our next deputation, I noticed that we have Counselor Volpatti, Regional Counselor Volpatti, in the audience. Welcome, Counselor Volpatti. Next up on deputations, we've got Shannon's Dream, a local youth who I was able to meet, Wes Prankard. He's going to inform us about a fundraising effort to build a playground for First Nation children, and I'm going to ask him to pronounce it. I'd say Atawapiscat, but I'm probably wrong. Is that close?
Yep.
This guy, talk about full of beans, this guy's got a lot of energy. Come on, Wes, step up to the mic. Can you, do we have something for him to step on, do we? No? Okay, can you see, everyone?
You can.
No, we have something in the back room. Welcome, Wes, and thanks for being here.
Yeah. Mayor Jim DiOdati and city councillors, I would like to thank you very much for the invitation to come and speak to you this evening, and allow me to tell you my story and let you know what I'm doing. Oh. Okay. I first met Mayor DiOdati this past March at the after-party for my annual campout. The reason I was camping out was to raise awareness and funds for the inequalities that exist between Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal people. My first campout was last year, March 2010, and I was able to raise $6,000 and 12,000 pounds of food and clothing gathered from our city. And Atawapiscat is a small rural community right on James Bay. The population is about 1,500, and it is said that 1,000 people are homeless. Atawapiscat is a lot like other northern reserves, but their living conditions are terrible. Most of the people live in houses between 15 to 25 others, and black mold is a huge These are some of the pictures of the stuff that we brought to Atawapiscat. I brought toys for the kids, we had food for the homeless shelter, we had tables and chairs for the homeless shelter, and many more. This is Oliver, my friend Rob, and me, and I met Oliver on my first trip. He was two years old, and when he was a newborn, he had to have heart surgery. The doctor told his parents to keep him in a safe and clean environment. Black mold and frost is in this room inside Oliver's home. Now, this is pretty much a normal thing. If you go into a house in Atawapiscat, you would probably see something like that. And his parents had no choice, they had nowhere else to bring him, and so that's where he was after his heart surgery. The school in Atawapiscat was built 30 years ago and had a diesel pipe break underneath it. Over 30, or 300,000 litres of diesel pooled under the school, and for 20 years, kids became sick. They got headaches, nosebleeds, and even passed out in their classrooms. In the year 2000, the parents all decided that they couldn't allow their kids to go to school. The government finally agreed that it wasn't healthy and put portables in with the promise to build a new school that year. That was 10 years ago. And every year, the grade eights visit Toronto and Niagara Falls for their year-end trip. Three years ago, a 13-year-old girl, Shannon Custashen, decided to go to Ottawa instead of the school and trip, and to ask the government for a real school. And Shannon became a leader in her community, and because of her courage, became the largest youth-led movement in Canada's history. Last year, the kids from Atawapiscat didn't get to visit Niagara Falls, because on their way there from Toronto, they had learned that Shannon had been killed in a car accident. Because Shannon wanted to be a lawyer, she had to leave her school and family and go to school in the south, where she would get a much better education than on her reserve. She was 15 years old and in grade 10 when her life ended, but her dreams are still alive. Thousands of kids, Aboriginal and non-Aboriginal, have taken up their fight for fair and equitable education for First Nations children. This past week, a report that included 38 letters from kids was presented to the United Nations. So, why am I telling you all this, and what does this have to do with Niagara Falls? For years, the kids from Atawapiscat have came to Niagara Falls for their year-end trip, and they love it and look forward to it. For a lot of them, it might be the only place they get to visit. They remember the trip their whole life, and because of this, I would like to recommend that the city of Niagara Falls officially adopts the reserve of Atawapiscat. Here are some ways that we, as a city, could help. We could all sign in support of Shannon's Dream, for all children to have equal access to a proper education. You can sign in at shannonsdream.ca. We can contribute to my walk to Atawapiscat to help build them a playground. One of the things I noticed while visiting there was that they didn't have a safe place to play. I thought that not only should all kids have a right to an education and good health, they should also have a right to play. Anything else is just not fair. And to date, we have raised just over $50,000, but still need about $8,500, and I would love to have this city's support for this project, and it would mean a lot for the kids, knowing that Niagara Falls supports them and their right to play. Also, I am running for Canada's next top young philanthropist. I would very much appreciate your votes and your endorsement, as I am the only Niagara Falls representative. We have a link to it, which is voteforwes.ca.
You have to stop that this kid.
The grade eights spend thousands to come self every year. They raise it with hot dog sales and bingo. It would be good if they didn't have to raise that portion and keep that money to take care of their everyday needs on the reserve. I would like to suggest that the city of Niagara Falls and its tourism partners to take care of the Niagara Falls portion of their yearly trip. An example of how the city could help would be to have the kids stay free at one of the child-friendly hotels in our city. They could subsidize attractions and food. For more information of what I have discussed, and much more, can be found on my website, Thank you very much for listening, and I will gladly take any questions you may have.
Wes, thank you very much. Wes, not only are you cute, but you're well-spoken. You do a great job, and it was such a pleasure, and myself and our MPP, Kim Crater, met you at your last event. And this is just the way he is all the time. He's very personable, very likable, and his parents, I'm sure, are very proud. We've got a couple of our councillors would like to talk and ask some questions, Wes. So first, we've got Counselor Ian Noney, and then Counselor Morocco.
Thank you. Wes, I will work your political campaign the first year you run. I think you are awesome. We have the Mayor's Youth Advisory sitting behind him, and he says he needs 1,000 people to sponsor him for $100. Will you help? Now, I am no Facebook expert, guys, but I'm betting between you guys, you have far more than 1,000 friends. So if you could go on Facebook, Mr. Mayor, I know you've got thousands on there, I mean between all of us, if you went on Facebook and put on your Facebook page, please donate $10 to Wes at www.starfish or contact Wes at his email address. I'm betting by the end of this week, you could raise that $1,000 he needs just by your Facebook page. So Wes, if they're going to do that, and they want to donate money to you, how do they get it to you? Is there a link on there? Is there, do we need to pool it in one spot for you to come and get it? You tell us how to do it, and we'll do our best to help you.
Okay, well, there's a link on our website to PayPal.
Okay.
And so, one of the main ways to donate...
This kid is you at 10.
Oh, she's got me beat.
One of the main ways to donate is PayPal.
Okay.
But there are probably many other ways to donate. We've gotten checks, we've, on our events, people would come, and they, we have this thing where they would put money in, and so there are many other ways to donate, and yeah.
Okay, Mr. Mayor, then I'd like to challenge our youth advisory sitting behind us, because I don't, I have like 60 friends online Facebook. I know between you guys, you guys could help do this just by putting it on your Facebook tonight. I'll be happy to donate for your walk, and Mr. Mayor, if we could maybe work with a local hotel or some, I mean, between everybody we all know, we should be able to help get these kids down here, because I do believe it is a trip of a lifetime for them, and you know, we often have people that we help build schools in Africa and make living conditions better in Africa, and this is in our own province, and it just seems to me these kids need our help all across the province and the country, not just, you know, on events where Wes comes and tells us. This, it's hard to believe this is within our own country.
Thank you. Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Morocco?
Well, Mayor DiOdati, I have to echo Carolyn. I mean, Wesley, what a awesome, very impressive young man. I have to ask, how did you get started on this project and finding out about this? Was it part of a school?
Step up to the mic though, okay, Wes, so we can hear you at home, too.
It's kind of a long story, but I'm going to make it as short as possible for you. My dad went to Atawapiscat, because he was working with charity, telling like me and my family about it all, and I just really caught on and thought, they really need help, because this is in Ontario, right? And so, I started with my first campout, raising money, and my first trip is where pretty much everything started. On my first trip, I found out about Shannon's Dream, and I came to the conclusion that having a playground is just weird. It's, so I guess the first, my first trip to Atawapiscat really started everything.
Well, good for you. I don't know how many people of this year that involved are actually even interested in other people's way of their living conditions, and you know, I think it's deplorable that that actually is taking place, and we've heard that at FCM and at other conferences we've attended, that reserves are very underutilized. I actually wanted to also ask, if there's an opportunity that staff can look into, I mean, we actually do a lot of work with companies that provide us with playground equipment. Is there a possibility that we could actually work with any of those companies that would look at maybe donating a playground for this cause, or actually even coming in to offer them a better price than that, than any other price they could probably do? I wonder if that's an opportunity for us to actually get staff to look into that for this young man and his cause.
Well, let's get an answer for you. That's a great comment. Mr., oh, well, we've got, oh yeah, Mr. Holman. Is there any opportunity? I was looking toward Ms. Moldenhauer, and she quickly pointed toward you, so is there any suggestion on either discounted equipment, or through our buying power as a municipality, or donated equipment from, you know, Paris or one of the makers of our playground equipment?
I don't have an immediate answer for you, Mr. Mayor, but certainly we'd have to look at all different options, whether it's refitting older equipment or supplying...
Well, it still would have to be within the safety standards. I wouldn't want to be making sure that's first.
But I'm sure they have access to a whole range of products, whether they're brand-new or slightly used, that we could certainly make the connection there and have them follow us.
That'd be great. I greatly appreciate that. And Wes, I want to let you know that I think that you could probably get $100 easy from a number of the people around this table. I'll be the first one to donate as well. Thank you. Thank you very much for your effort.
Hold on a second, Wes. Just to, yep, right now, our council, we're going to get you started, bring it around, and also, before you run away, do we have a camera? Do we have one of our cameras? Anybody a chance? Does anyone have a camera here today? You have a, yes? Okay, you have one? Okay. Can you, yeah, can you take one? Wes, come on up here. We're going to... Wes, where's Wes? Come on up here, Wes. Oh, here. Come on. Come up close, though, we want to get a nice... Tell you, I'll tell you why in a minute.
This is going to Facebook.
Listen, buddy, before you run away, and you know what we're going to do here today, too? I just checked with our CAO, and what we're going to do is we're going to maybe put this cute boy's face on our website for a little while, and what we'll do is, when you click on this cute little face, you'll be able to take, it'll take you to his Starfish, his Shannon's Dream, and Vote for Wes. So we're going to, we're going to support his... Because our website does, because it's Niagara Falls, it does get a lot of hits, even internationally, so who knows where this can go, but we're going to, for a certain period of time, we're not sure yet, and, as well, Wes, the City Council of Niagara Falls decided it all throws some money into the envelope, so this is for you to get you started on your path.
Thank you very much.
Good job, buddy. Well, I feel bad for whoever's up next after that performance. Italian Heritage Month, thank you very much, Wes, and to your family, too. Italian Heritage Month is coming up, and tonight, for a deputation, we have Sarah Vasquez and Sue Forcyer, who are on the organizing committee. They're going to inform council of some special activities coming up at Club Italia on Sunday, June 26th. Welcome, Sarah and Sue.
Thank you. Okay, we can't beat that president. The youth is making us look bad tonight. Anyways, good evening, everyone, your worship, Mayor DiOdati, and members of Niagara Falls City Council. I'm Sarah Vasquez. I sit on the board of Club Italia, and I've also been asked to chair the Italian Heritage Day this year. Along to my right is Sue Forcyer, very familiar face in the city, and she's the co-chair for Heritage Day this year. We are here tonight to discuss the Heritage Day celebration. Back in October of 2010, the Ontario government had proclaimed the month of June as Italian Heritage Month. The province of Ontario recognizes the important contribution immigrants have made in building Ontario's communities and the economic, political, social, and cultural achievements of the Italian Canadians throughout the province. Italian Heritage Month is an opportunity to remember, celebrate, and educate future generations about Ontario's rich history. Club Italia, along with several other Italian clubs in the Niagara region, want to celebrate. On Sunday, June 26th, Club Italia will host the first Italian heritage celebration in Niagara Falls. We invite all the citizens of Niagara to celebrate with us. You don't have to be Italian, the invitation is extended to the community of Niagara as well as the region. We invite everyone to be with us. We also extend this invitation to all the other municipalities across the Niagara region. The celebration will be held at Club Italia, with the opening festivities at 12 noon. There will be a variety of talent from across the Niagara region, folkloric dancers, chorus singers, soccer games, bocce tournaments, and we will also have an arts and cultural tent, just to name a few. We've also put out a challenge to the mayors. I understand, Mayor DiOdati, you have accepted, as well as Mayor Vance Battaway, and we are just waiting for the Mayor of St. Catherine's to participate in the grape stomping competition, which will be held. grape stomping competition, which will be held that day. The Italian regional clubs will also showcase their specialty dishes. We're happy to have with us Club Roma from St. Catherine's, Club Costa Piñano from Welland, the Italian Canadian Cultural Centre from Port Coburn, and of course, Club Italia. There's music, entertainment throughout the day. Our main performance is at eight P.M. We have Luca Pollezzi direct from Italy, who will be performing in Canada for his first time. And we're fortunate to have him with us. And the day will end with fireworks at ten P.M. So this is an all-day event. So we encourage everyone to bring their family and friends and lawn chairs. There's gonna be a lot of great food, fun. Of course, we got to see the mayor in a great stomping competition. So we hope to see everyone there.
No pressure, but we like the comfy to be Captain Mayor of all.
And that, I believe, concludes our presentation.
Yep. So we have a poster here, but what we'd ask, if... If possible, if we can put it on the events, um, page of the city. So, uh, coming events, so that would be great.
Absolutely.
And if anybody has any questions, they can call the club at any time or just go to the website at clubitalia.ca. And, uh, the itinerary will be there and ads will be coming out this next week. And there'll be, um, lots of things to do. Bring a lawn chair, activities all during the day, soccer games, bocce tournament, uh, bruschetta tournament, all the Italian stuff you can think of, and lots of good food. So I hope everyone can come out.
Sounds great. Now, were there any questions of council about Italian Heritage Day? No? Bart, uh, that's not a good day to bring your Wonder Bread. So, uh, don't, uh... Thank you very much. Please look forward to the competition.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, next up, for deputations, we have the Niagara to GTA corridor study. Uh, we've got Eric Flora, Senior Policy Advisor, Ministry of Transportation, and members of the project team that are here to show us the next steps on the study. And as well, I understand, we've got John Slobozian, Project Coordinator, and, uh, we've got Patrick Pacini. I hope I got all the names right? Sound right? Okay, great. Gentlemen, step up and, uh, it's all yours.
Great. Uh, thank you very much, uh, Mayor and councillor for the invitation to come out and talk about the Niagara to GTA corridor planning study. Uh, in terms of, we... We sat out in the hall and we listened to the youth deputations and we just listened to the most recent one. And we are gonna be by far the boringest presentation that's made. I would want to start with that because we can't compare to some of what was discussed previously. I wanted to start by kind of defining what this study is about. It's actually, uh, a corridor planning as well as an environmental assessment study. Consultation on this is absolutely critical because it is being done as a... As a provincial individual environmental assessment. Consultation with all of the affected stakeholders is a key component. We use that consultation to judge, uh, how all the stakeholders, including all the municipalities, feel about the various options that are being put on the table. So opportunities like this really do help us to better define and evaluate the alternatives as we move it forward. What... Where we are, uh, with this process, this process has been underway for quite some time now, since two thousand and six. We have a draft transportation development strategy. That's the milestone that we're at today. What that does is that provides a whole series of recommendations to the transportation network that connects the Niagara frontier to the Greater Toronto area. And these are long-term, primarily long-term recommendations. And it's all about long-range interregional transportation issues within that corridor. All right, our study area for the project, as I mentioned, it extends basically from the Niagara frontier right through into Halton region, connecting us to the GTA. What are we looking at in there? We're looking at all of the transportation services that contribute to that long-range travel pattern. So we're also considering, uh, rail, transit, the ports, et cetera. The entire project is really about managing the growth that is expected to occur in the Greater Golden Horseshoe between now to twenty thirty-one and even beyond twenty thirty-one. There are a number of policies related to that growth that form the basis of our project. Included in those are the Growth Plan for the Greater Golden Horseshoe, the Green Belt Plan, the Niagara Scarpment Plan, the Provincial Policy Statement, and of course, municipal official plans within our study area. The growth... The population of the... The Greater Golden Horseshoe is forecast to grow by two point four million people by twenty thirty-one. That is apportioned in the regions with... Within our study area. Halton is expected to get two hundred and sixty thousand of that. Hamilton, one hundred and twenty thousand, and Niagara, sixty-nine thousand. What that growth really means for us in terms of the Ministry of Transportation is that there will be a significant increase in demand for travel, both for people and goods, all through this... This corridor. A little bit about how we're actually moving forward on this. First and foremost is that we're not starting from scratch. We are building on the other transportation planning initiatives that are already out there. This is a question we often get, particularly from members of the public. And we really want to make it clear that our base, from where we start, includes the recommendations that are in the GO twenty twenty strategic plan. It includes the MetroLink's Regional Transportation Plan, all of the recommendations that are included in that plan. And it includes the Ministry of Transportation Southern Ontario Highway Program. So we start by assuming that all of these recommendations are fully implemented. That's our base. The approach that we use, it's often referred to as the building block approach because we kind of start at a very basic level where we say, "We already have a transportation network in place throughout this corridor." The first thing we want to do is make sure that that network is optimized before we start considering other alternatives. So we look at different ways to ensure that the functioning of the existing system is as good as it can be prior to sort of ratcheting it up and looking at other alternatives. Once we've looked at optimizing the existing network, then we start adding on. So what else will we need to do? Optimizing the existing network does contribute to a solution. It does not cover off all of the additional travel that's gonna occur. We next, we look at expanded non-road infrastructure. So we're talking about transit, marine, rail. What is gonna be happening in each of those areas over the time period that we're looking at? And how will those infrastructure improvements help to take up that demand for the additional travel that we expect to see? Then the last is the road-based stuff. Once we've looked at optimizing, once we've looked at non-road based, then we look and say, "Okay, so what's left? How much of the demand still needs to be resolved?" And then we look at, "What can we do to widen and expand existing facilities? And what types of new facilities will we have to add in order to address that demand?" And that's where the Transportation Development Strategy comes in. It is a full set of recommendations that covers all of those building block approaches. Often, that's not discussed. When you read about this, when you talk to folks about this, they kind of pick and choose different pieces of the strategy that they want to talk about, those that are relevant to tho... To them, those that might have impacts on them. That's fully understandable and expected. But it really is a comprehensive strategy that does include recommendations for all of these categories. Now, I'm gonna ask Patrick Pacini from our consulting team from URS to talk a little bit about the specific recommendations that are in the... In the draft development strategy. Patrick?
Mayor and member of councils, thank you for the opportunity to be here to present this today. Uh, as John said, the... The strategy that we're, uh, we've developed is... Is multifaceted and... And multimodal. And, uh, the building block approach is the approach that we've used to... To develop it. So we've divided the strategy and... And the next series of slides are... Are divided based on that building block approach. So the first, uh... The first block of the building block is the optimization of the existing transportation system. And, uh, there are a number of, uh, exciting and innovative ideas that, uh, that we've come across through our... Our look at other jurisdictions and our consultation with industry experts that will help to optimize the, uh, the travel of goods and people through the study area. Uh, bus bypass shoulders is... Is one good example. So this is the concept of allowing buses to bypass, uh, traffic on the highway during periods of congestion, making transit a more attractive option. Providing, uh, broader coverage, uh, and... Improved technology, uh, from the perspective of, uh, real-time information to drivers is another way. The... The photo there is of the MTO compass system. And so, we're recommending as part of our strategy, expanded coverage of that system. Uh, and that would include just, uh, relevance tonight, the, uh, the highway four twenty, uh, within our study area. We would be looking at that for, uh, expanding the compass system. Uh, ramp metering and providing bypass lanes on ramps, similar to the bus bypass shoulders, providing a... A way for transit vehicles and high occupancy vehicles to... To get around traffic congestion, in this case, on ramps. And, uh, and ramp metering then providing the opportunity for... For that flow to be managed so that it's not all coming onto the highway at once, promoting a more uniform flow of traffic. Uh, adjustable speed limits, this is actually fairly widely used in... In other parts of the world. It's... It's being looked at in the United States as a pilot project. And we're recommending that, uh, that the ministry look at it for... For our study area as well. The concept here being that, uh, the speed signs on the highway would be variable message, so they would be digital and they could be, uh, adjusted. As, uh, as traffic conditions start to, uh, to slow down, the, uh, the, um, the speeds could be dropped so that it would promote a more even flow of traffic. Uh, and then the other... The other, uh, graphic on the right at the bottom, reversible lanes, are a number of areas where there's a real difference in terms of demand for various highways in the... In the study area, where there's a much larger demand in one direction than the other. And, uh, so things like reversible lanes or contra-flow can provide that opportunity. The second building block is focused on non-roadway infrastructure improvements. And, uh, so the, uh... I'm not sure why this is, uh, this is advancing without me pushing the buttons here. It's moving me along. So I guess you haven't finished, eh? So MetroLink's has looked at this, uh, this particular aspect of the transportation system exhaustively, and they've come up with a regional transportation plan that is many billions of dollars, uh, in terms of funded... In terms of funding. Um, we've come up with a few ideas, an interregional transit service. An interregional transit service focused around the city of Hamilton would be one, uh, opportunity. We see Hamilton as becoming a significant growth node, and... And that could be added to the regional transportation plan. From a roadway perspective, what we found, and, uh, let me just quickly go back to the slide there, is in terms of, uh, our assumptions, we've made some aggressive assumptions in terms of what these will do. We're anticipating that, uh, that, uh, the roadway improve... The non-roadway improvements will result in a ten percent reduction in... In long-distance truck demand. And based on our look at other jurisdictions and also discussions with industry experts, we believe that to be a very aggressive, uh, forecast. Um, so what that means is that when we've looked at what the future travel demands will be in twenty thirty-one, we reduce those demands by ten percent for interregional trucks. And on the previous slide, it was, uh, a four percent reduction to accommodate, uh, to account for the, uh, the optimization techniques that we had, uh, identified. From a widening perspective, um, there is the need with... With all of those, uh, improvements to... To look at future, uh, roadway expansion. And again, here, we've looked at what can we do with the existing corridors before we looked at new corridors. So Highway four oh one, we've identified a need to widen Highway four oh one by six lanes east of Milton and four lanes west of Milton. And that is in conjunction with the GTA West Study that's occurring to the east of our study area. Uh, widening of the four oh seven ETR by two lanes, all the way from Highway four oh one down to the interchange where QEW, uh, Highway four oh seven and, uh, and, uh, four oh three meet. Widening of Highway four oh three, uh, by four lanes at the east end between the four oh seven and the QEW. And then, uh, from that interchange, uh, the Freeman interchange, uh, to the west, to the west part of our study area, expanding Highway four oh three by two lanes. The one area that we haven't looked at a significant expansion of Highway four oh three is directly through Hamilton because, uh, that would... There would be some significant impacts that we had identified through our study with a significant widening of the QE... Of, uh, Highway four oh three. But we have identified some opportunities for operational improvements to that section of the four oh three that we believe should be implemented, uh, in the short term. And then from the perspective of QEW widening by two lanes, and these would be HOB lanes all the way from that, uh, four oh seven, four oh three QEW interchange through to St. Catherine's, and then also between Highway four oh five and Highway four twenty, uh, in this area. So basically, we're transitions from six to four to maintain six lanes through that section to Highway four twenty. So those capacity improvements will add a lot of capacity to the transportation system. And in conjunction with the optimization and the non-roadway improvements, th... These will address a significant portion of the demands. What we have found though is that in the west part of our study area, and then in the east part of our study area, there is the need for additional capacity by a new corridor. And so, we've actually recommended, uh, further study in... In both of those areas for new corridors. In the case of the... The section to the east, it's... It would be for a new corridor between Highway four oh six and the QEW within that, uh, that red area. And the goal of the work that we're gonna be undertaking in the coming months will be to look at corridors and... And come up with a more refined study area in that eastern portion. And that will be built upon the work that, uh, that Niagara region has already completed. So they've... They've completed the first two phases of the municipal class environmental assessment for an east-west arterial road corridor. And so, we feel that there's a real opportunity to build on that work. We would be looking at it from the perspective of a provincial, uh, freeway as opposed to an arterial road. So there are some differences in terms of role and function and the right-of-way requirements and the geometry that would be... Need to be looked at and revisited as part of our study. But we believe that there's a real opportunity to... To utilize the... The work that they've done as part of that study in looking at corridors. And then in the central area, uh, what... What our findings from our study were, were that by twenty thirty-one, uh, there was not the need for a new corridor within our study area. Uh, we... We found that a widening of QEW, and I mentioned before on the previous slide, by... By two lanes, which would be HOB lanes, would provide sufficient capacity by twenty thirty-one. Uh, but we do recognize that there's a lot of interest in... In trying to understand when that new corridor may be. And... And people want to know, you know, if it's not before twenty thirty-one, when is it? So part of the work that we're going to be doing in the coming months will be trying to get a sense of what the... When the needs for that new corridor might arise beyond twenty thirty-one. And then to look at potentially a monitoring strategy to... To be a little bit more definitive in terms of what the ministry would be looking at. We... We've said in our strategy that the ministry will monitor future traffic conditions and future development in the area. But what... What does that really mean? So that would be the intent of the monitoring strategy that we would be looking at developing in the central area. Yeah, I didn't provide a slide on the west area because I wasn't sure that it would be, uh, of particular interest. But... But generally, in the west area, it's a similar exercise to what we're proposing in the east area, looking at new corridor, uh, alternatives and widening of the four oh three and... And developing, uh, a more refined, uh, area for future stages. In terms of our next steps, uh, we're in the process now of reviewing the feedback that we've received on our transportation development strategy, which is draft, as John mentioned. Uh, we're gonna review and incorporate that feedback, uh, through the summer. Uh, we're... We're undertaking additional analysis, which will be, uh, take us into the summer and the fall. Uh, we'll be meeting with municipal and agency staff to discuss our work plan and also the findings from the work plan in the fall through the winter. And we're anticipating being able in a position to finalize our strategy early next year. So that's the, uh, the slide presentation.
If I could just add one... One point of emphasis in terms of where we're at on this thing. And Patrick did mention it. He said that it's draft. And that's really important to understand. Everything that's in this strategy is at a draft stage. Uh, often, it's being discussed as MTO is now recommending A, B, C, and D. Not necessarily. This is, uh, it's an environmental assessment. It's an iterative process. This is where we're at today. But we are out consulting on these recommendations and taking that feedback and then using that feedback to continue to... To hone those recommendations and come up with a final set. Thank you.
We do have some, uh, questions. You know, my note is, uh, is Eric with you as well?
Did he come through?
Yes, Eric, on the back.
On the back, okay. Hi, Eric, welcome. Counselor Thompson.
Yes, this is being done through the Ministry of Transportation?
Correct.
This has nothing to do with the former EA that was done on the Mid Peninsula Corridor?
No, this is the current government's individual environmental assessment. It's not, it's not the mid pen title that you'll often hear.
Because you've done the EA on that, and the EA indicated that that wasn't something that the ministry was going to go ahead with, is that right?
Well, as Patrick mentioned, there are, there's a whole series of specific recommendations in here. There's a lot that we're going to go ahead with. If you're referring to the central piece through the middle of the peninsula, what we've really said is that by 2031, the QEW widening that we proposed will handle the traffic. But after 2031, there are, there's going to be an issue. We're not sure whether we can further widen the QEW to address the traffic, or whether a new corridor would be the preferred option. It's still to be determined.
As I've said many times before about this issue, I like to deal with things that are going to happen when I'm here, so I'm not really worried about that one. So we hear comments about the upcoming election in October, about the leader of the opposition suggesting that his priority is the Mid Peninsula Corridor. What happens with that issue?
Well, I think we're going to have to wait until October.
(laughter) I guess.
But at this point in time, we just carry on with the environmental assessment process that we have undertaken. We did have to do something called Terms of Reference for this process, which sort of is an outline of how you do your study. That's guiding us, and that will continue to guide us.
Well, it makes so much sense that you're concentrating on sending the people where they want to go. If you look at the traffic counts from Hamilton to Niagara, and you look at the traffic counts from Niagara Falls to Fort Erie, they drop off substantially. So where do people from the GTA want to go? It's Niagara Falls. I noticed on one of your drawings there that you had six lanes coming into St. Catherine's, and then it stopped there. Why wouldn't they continue on to Niagara Falls when that is really the destination that, of choice of most people coming?
Through you, Mr. Mayor. I mean, the, I don't know if it's, if we can quickly get to that. This is the slide I think you're referring to. What we're showing is a widening to the point where the QW is already being widened, so it's already being widened through St. Catherine's. We've shown a widening up to that point, and then a continuation of that widening to the east of there. The reason that we didn't look at further widening through St. Catherine's, that was actually one of the major decision factors in identifying the need for a new corridor between Highway 406 and the QEW, was that it would avert the need to widen QW through St. Catherine's and through to the Garden City Skyway in the future. And it would also provide network flexibility for travelers that are destined to the three border crossings. So that was part of the rationale for the new corridor between.
Well, I, the, I think the suggestions that you're making here are rational, rather than cutting across the Mid Peninsula Corridor, which would be an environmental disaster, in my opinion, and you'd certainly, there's still people who are agitated about that. And even during the last municipal election, we had to fill out a survey of how we felt with respect to that issue, so it hasn't gone away. The idea of expanding the Queen E and not taking any way, anything away from the Port Colborne, Welland, that end of the peninsula, it's appropriate. The expansion of the 406 is, in my opinion, a no-brainer, and in fact, compensates for what they were attempting to do with the Mid Peninsula Corridor. I think that the suggestions are just the start of a process, which is going to be discussed with all of the stakeholders along the corridor. The idea that was suggested that I had at the time, expand the Queen E. Apparently, you own four lanes each way. You own that property. And in fact, I think, hopefully, I was responsible for the expansion of the bridge in St. Catherine's to four lanes each way. I made the motion to make that happen. Hopefully, that four lanes each way would compensate for anything cutting across the Mid Peninsula Corridor, and also give the opportunity for people to reach their destination, which is Niagara on the Lake, St. Catherine's, Niagara Falls, rather than shooting them right over to the Peace Bridge. And the Peace Bridge can't handle that kind of flow anyway. So I think you're on the right track, and it looks like we'll have lots of opportunity to have input into this situation as we go along. And four lanes each way along the Queen E is a great idea, would take the pressure off, certainly well past 31, so look forward to seeing what happens. Thank you. And that includes the finalization and the extension of the 406 to the municipalities to the north.
Question for you fellows, these numbers here, thank you, Counselor Thompson, these numbers that you've given us in these studies, have they factored in GO train coming all the way to Niagara Falls? Is that, was that part of your, yeah, your numbers?
Yes.
Okay. And I'm sure you're aware that we've had ongoing discussions with MetroLinks and the St. Lawrence Seaway to get past the canal challenge, and we're at a workable solution. We had another very productive meeting last week, and it was our third meeting, and we're very close. We're running some studies. The averages all work out. Now we've got to check the specifics, run a ghost train just to make sure, but it looks good. The goal here, and I'm going to ask the council to make a motion, we've made this motion in the past, excuse me, and I have a copy of it here, to, for a resolution. It's going to be also coming forward at the region and the city of St. Catherine's, that we go on record, once again, this council as being in favor of expansion of year-round GO commuter service right to the city of Niagara Falls by 2015. And the reason being, 2015, in time for the Pan Am Games, we'll be hosting all of the athletes from around the world right here in Niagara Falls, and that's the motive for all of us to get it done by that date. So I'd ask council, if we make a motion, we've got Counselor Morocco and Counselor Wing, is there any discussion on that resolution? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous, and I'm glad that you folks are here to see it, and our MTO rep, Eric, as well. This council, the region, this will be coming up at our next regional council meeting, and the city of St. Catherine's next week will be passing this exact same resolution to show that we're all onsite. Just a couple weeks ago, the first GO train rolled in, and 400 people got off one train. And it was great, because we had the chairman of MetroLinks here, and he got to see it firsthand, as well as Minister Bradley, so it was good. Are there any other comments for our guests here tonight? Gentlemen, thank you very much. Appreciate you coming down to share that with us.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next up, we've got the issue on Dorchester Road, AM 201103, 4709 Dorchester Road, known as the optimist. And I understand that we have Victor Meritori that would like to address the council. Welcome, Mr. Meritori.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Very briefly, approximately two weeks ago, in a discussion with staff, there was a timing issue with respect to the finalization of some recommendations in the comprehensive traffic analysis that this city is going through. Members of staff felt that they needed some additional time to have that completed. We agreed, again, in discussions with staff in the last few days, as well as this afternoon. I think staff and we feel comfortable that the planning report that needs to come to this council for the statutory public meeting could be ready by Monday, July the 18th. And therefore, dear worship, I'm requesting an adjournment to that date for the public meeting.
Okay, okay, just one second, I'm sorry. Do you want to?
Which year?
Which year? Okay, we've got a motion by Counselor Anone, seconded by Counselor Morocco. Yes, Counselor Gates?
I'd just like to speak to the motion. Have we given any thought to, prior to it coming back before council, we do the thing, same thing that we did with Paulette Road, where we had an open meeting prior to a coming of council to try to get rid of some of the issues around that particular Morrison area? I think it might be beneficial, Anone to yourselves, but also to the council.
Because this was to be a public meeting, I really don't want to get into the merits of the matter, because I think it would be unfair. But in answer to that question, we did have a meeting with the public, and there was a very good turnout, about 35 to 40 local residents were present. The issues that were key to that discussion were really focused primarily on one issue, and that's the roadway system. We went back, I went back, and wrote to our traffic consultant with itemized issues that had been raised by members of the public. He was asked to address it, and I understand, well, I know, not just understand, I have a copy of it, that an additional report on that issue has been forwarded to Mr. Holman's people, and so they have it. I don't know what else we could do. I mean, we've tried to do that very thing that they asked us to address, so.
Just a quick follow-up to that. The reason why I asked that question was actually residents in that area that had called me and have asked for one, so I guess my question would be, is how did you notify the residents that there is an open meeting?
How were the, on the original meeting?
Yes.
It's publication by the city, it's a standard procedure. I mean, Mr. Hurlovich is here, he would have done that circulation, and...
Can we get some clarity here, ask the clerk?
Yeah, exactly. Through our planning department, we circulate as per the regulations of the Planning Act for both the public meeting and the public open house that we have beforehand.
I would be surprised, Counselor, that it wasn't well-known, because as I said, there was quite a, 35 to 40, my count, 35 to 40 local residents were present, so I assume that it was fairly well-recognized that the meeting was going on.
Are there any other comments or questions? Okay, we'll call the vote. All those in favor? It's unanimous.
Thank you, worship.
Thank you very much. Okay, next up, we have subject MW 2011-14 Water and Wastewater Service Delivery Review, region of Niagara. And I know that Regional Counselor Val Patty is here with great interest. She's missing possibly part of the hockey gang to hear this. Mr. Holman, did you want to go over this report, please?
Thanks, Mr. Mayor. Just quickly, the region of Niagara is embarking on a review of their water and wastewater systems, and has directed their staff to prepare Terms of Reference to look at the relative merits of consolidating wastewater collection systems with wastewater treatment and water distribution and water treatment across the region. The Terms of Reference that were drafted, in our opinion, don't appear to go into the issues that we feel are going to come out of this review. They're allocating a budget of $100,000 to do this kind of cursory investigation. And we wanted to point out to council that the city itself has gone through a service delivery review of its water and wastewater group, resulting in a amalgamation of our internal services. And recently, our program's been accredited by the Canadian General Standards Board. We feel we've done a pretty good job internally here. Now, having said that, it is our, one of our corporate goals to continue, continually look at our operations and make sure there's an opportunity for us to take advantage of efficiencies by working with, both internally, within our organization, and with other agencies. But we feel that this review isn't going to answer some of the questions about the consequences of reassigning responsibility to another entity. Particularly, in particular, we're concerned about losing control of some of the local land use decisions and economic development decisions. By giving up control of these assets, we're going to lose control of the timing of infrastructure investments. We're concerned about what impact it might have on the staff that's assigned to water and wastewater services, but also provide services by plowing snow and helping out in the parks. We're concerned about the financial impacts of transferring these assets to another entity, particularly how it affects municipal revenues and our debt capacity. And we're also concerned about how the residents of this community that have contributed and made those investments through their water and sewer rates, how they're going to be compensated if these assets get transferred to another entity. We really think that by giving up control of water and wastewater is going to precipitate the discussion about governance in Niagara. And so if we're going to embark on a review of water and wastewater services in Niagara, we really think that all of the issues should be properly vetted, and therefore, our recommendation is not to support the Terms of Reference that have been drafted, but rather to ask for more comprehensive terms that are going to answer some of these questions and concerns, and that two steering committees be put together, one that has representation from a political side, and one that has a technical steering committee. Be happy to answer any questions, Mr. Mayor.
Okay, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Peter Angelo.
Well, first of all, this issue is similar to the previous discussion, is extremely important, and I have to say that I support the recommendation of staff to be extremely cautious with respect to how this matter is handled. I think the work done over the past many years in this municipality has been certainly superior to a lot of other areas within the region, and I think we're in a pretty solid shape with respect to our services as it stands at the present time. Maybe I've been around too long and seen what happened at the start of regional government. Bigger is not better, and look at where we are today with respect to costs. We have huge, huge costs at the region, huge debt at the region, huge debt at the local municipality, and that's not a good thing. Regional government come in, and I had the firsthand opportunity to see what was going on with respect to sewer and water in my 30 years with the Health Department, and went around throughout the region and saw all of the small hamlets, all of the small municipalities drowning in their own sewage, not having potable water supply, all kinds of difficulties and problems. And so, all of a sudden, with regional government, you see that the small community of Grimsby is able to build a $32 million water treatment facility. How does that happen? Well, it happens very easily by the fact that the haves give to the have-nots, and that's how all of the serious, and there's still one or two left in the area, sewage problems and lack of potable water to some hamlets and districts get their water, is because the larger municipalities, the taxpayers, pay to make sure that services are extended to those areas. So we have done a job here in looking after, and to suggest that the region takes that over, how do we know how Welland has looked after, I'm not picking on Welland, Welland has looked after their services? Maybe they are substantially substandard to what we have here. And in a regional situation, once again, the haves are going to look after, the have-nots and the taxpayers here. Mrs. Brown, living in her house on Second Avenue on a fixed income by herself, she has to pay the same taxes as anybody else. And why should she be having elevation in her taxes to look after a municipality someplace else that has not been as diligent as maybe we have here? And maybe there is some that have been more diligent. I know the city of St. Catherine's, at the commencement of regional government, had the lowest water rate within the region. And so they have certainly paid to make sure that water and sewer have been brought up to a suitable standard around the rest of the region. So I think we've got to be extremely cautious, extremely careful, because, and this, as Mr. Holman indicated, could be the thin edge of the wedge about governance, which I don't have any problem with, but it should be examined. It's not being examined the way it should, and it's not being examined because of all the parochialism and everybody in every little municipality trying to hang on to their insignificant political seats. So we should be bigger than that, and we should be able to examine it. But this issue is extremely important. But this issue is extremely important and one that I would want to take very slowly and examine and make sure that the taxpayers in this municipality, who we are all responsible for here, are going to be treated fairly. It's going to be an advantage to us, and it's not going to be an additional tax burden. So, I like what the recommendation is. We'll take it slow and cautious, and if there's some opportunities to improve our situation with working with others, that's great. I just don't want to be in the situation that we were back in 1970, where we were responsible for a huge amount of sewer and water work in areas that deserved it and needed it, but the dollars came from here. So, I would be happy to move the approval of the recommendation, the cautious recommendation that's being recommended, and I would so move.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wang. Counselor Peter Angelo.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first remember this coming to light during budget discussions, actually, when Mr. Harrison brought it forward and told us that the region was looking at doing the study. It's not a minor issue. It's a major issue, and it should be a major issue to this council as well. If you take a look on page three, the staff writes in their report that the draft terms of reference appears to be heavily biased towards a consolidated service delivery model pollution. So, in essence, what staff is trying to tell us is that the region is simply doing a study that's going to justify them taking over water and wastewater. Now, the question is, do we want that to happen? And this is where I commend staff, because I think that they've given us a very thorough report. And in their recommendation, they're saying, well, hang on a second, you don't need to just look at a single-tier delivery system. You can look at the lower-tier municipality taking over water and wastewater as well, which is what I suggested during budget discussions. The other thing, your worship, that staff has done is they've gone through and they've given us a comprehensive breakdown of how it can affect not only our customers, but also us here at City Hall. Mr. Holman talked about land use and economic development, and I know that in the past few years, we've put a couple pumping stations out in Gardner West and Grassy Brook. Now, correct me if I'm wrong, but through you, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Holman, if the region was to gain full control of water and wastewater, would we be in control of where we put pumping stations?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I would assume that, you know, the region would follow their own strategy. If it was a growth south strategy, you know, those investments might have been made in Welland and Port Colby. It's one of those decisions that we would not have local control.
I guess what I'm trying to say, your worship, is that it comes down to a lot more than just water and wastewater delivery that will affect our council. Thank you.
Any other, yeah, Counselor Wang?
I'll just make a couple of quick comments as well. Bottom of page two, the staff point out that Niagara region staff acknowledged that a budget of $100,000 will not permit a detailed financial analysis and will leave some questions and analysis open for interpretation and further review. They go on to say that reviews completed in the late 1990s did not include a more in-depth analysis and resulting in ambiguous and inconclusive results. So, basically, we're looking at just doing the same thing again, throwing good taxpayer money after bad, and, you know, they're admitting right here that what they want to do is fundamentally flawed. And, you know, it's got more holes than a soaker hose, really. And so, the staff, I really appreciate what our staff have done, and they've brought in a really good report. They're saying, you know, it's not clear what's driving the need to review this issue, and I don't know, I keep thinking about the big pipe and lean fleet and wondering if they know somehow that has something to do with this, but definitely, this recommendation from our staff is excellent.
Okay, any other discussion? Counselor Val Patty, did you want to address the council before we take the vote?
Sure, if I may.
Welcome.
Thank you. Your worship, members of council, staff, and ladies and gentlemen, and Wes, a very important part of this council meeting, I think. Yeah, I just wanted to say that I do agree wholeheartedly with two of the issues that have been mentioned here. There's a bias in the terms of reference towards consolidation. There's no question about that. And $100,000 isn't going to cut it. This should be a very high-level review, and for that kind of money, you're not going to get one. And I think the most important part for us around this table is that the residents of Niagara Falls, the taxpayers, are treated equitably with whatever happens. I mean, there's 26%, right, that we pay here, and we have to get that kind of value for our money. Control may be an issue. I think value is more of an issue, and certainly, I support the staff report as well, although I won't be able to vote on it.
We'll take your vote. Thank you, Counselor. And also, I did get a, I was contacted by Counselor Maves at the region as well, and he feels the same way, and he's going to be meeting with our staff to further discuss this. And Counselor Greenwood also contacted us to let us know that she was already at, she's at a conference, already committed to another conference out of town. So, we will call the vote. All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, it's unanimous. All right, thank you very much. Thank you. All right, on to mayor's reports and announcements. It's with sadness that we announce, sympathy, Max Dren passed away recently. Max was the father of Carl Dren, our Director of Transportation, and Carl, please accept our condolences on your loss. In recent events, the FCM Conference, Federation of Canadian Municipalities, was held in Halifax, and I was joined by Counselor Morocco and Counselor Zianoni, and pleased to let you know that it was a very fruitful conference, especially in light of the fact that in three years, this national conference will be held here in Niagara Falls. There was a lot of valuable information that we shared and a lot that was learned, and as well, it was very valuable to spend time with our colleagues from around the country in sharing ideas. It was very interesting as well, one of our speakers was the mayor of Calgary, Mayor Nahid Nenshi, and he had a very interesting perspective on social media in the City of Calgary and how he reaches out to the people. He says, "We don't have public meetings in the traditional sense where they got to come to us." He says, "We reach out to the people, and we reach them through social media." It was very exciting, very interesting. Also, last week, we had our employee excellence breakfast. It was a great morning. It was last week, and we celebrated our employees and their outstanding efforts, specifically those who go above and beyond the call of duty. As well, we recognize long-serving employees who are honored and employee of excellence winners. And the whole idea, the direction of the corporation led by our CIO Ken Todd and Trent Dark, our Director of HR, and helped orchestrated by Dale Morton, is a new strategy that we're trying to catch people doing things right. And it's the message that we're sending out, and the message is spreading. Well done to everybody that was involved. Also, important notice, as you know, there are rotating postal strikes, and as everyone's excited to know, their June tax bills are here. It's time. And in the event that our mail is disrupted, property owners are encouraged to contact our finance department here at City Hall. Also, they're encouraged to pay at City Hall through electronically, through their financial institution, or through pre-authorized payments, or of course, we do have the mailbox outside of City Hall that you can drop it off at any time. As well, earlier, we had our mayor's youth advisory committee here, and we're happy to acknowledge and recognize that they're going to be recognized at the region for receiving an environmental award on Monday, June 20. Congratulations to all the young people in our committee who were all here earlier today with their initiatives, like Green Week, their approach to reduce plastic bags, plastic bottles in the city, and the lake. We're proud of our mayor's youth advisory, and we congratulate them on this initiative and leading by example. And lastly, Live Right Now Challenge. A number of us made a challenge here a couple weeks ago at our last council meeting. Counselor Kerrio, did you bring the scale with you today?
No, I was threatened.
So, we're going to go on the honor system, and you'll have to whisper it to somebody, and they'll write it in pencil somewhere, and hopefully, we'll all be successful. But the idea is the City of Niagara Falls, led by the council, is supporting the Live Well, Feel Good Challenge through the CBC. Pleased to announce that in partnership with Urgent Care Niagara, we're organizing a corporate wellness walk this month. It's going to be on the Olympic Torch Legacy Trail out behind City Hall. We're issuing the challenge to employees and employers throughout the city to have their workplace walk at some time before the end of the month in conjunction with Live Right Now. Stay tuned for more details and or watch our website for upcoming specifics. Thank you very much. Next up, communications and comments. We have a communication from the Ontario Korean Businessmen's Association requesting support for the sale of beer and wine in Niagara Falls convenience stores. In their letter, if you read it, they're saying that being a tourist destination, this would be helpful as other destinations. Counselor Kerrio, Counselor Thompson.
Well, your worship, I was going to say, it's obvious that this does not fall under our authority. It's a provincial matter. We should maybe write them back and tell them that, and I don't think I'd want to weigh in on this issue anyways. I don't know, and I don't think this council knows all the pros and cons of distributing liquor any more freely than it is today, so I wouldn't want to take a side right now, not knowing enough about it. So, we should just tell them that they should deal with the provincial government.
Okay, Counselor Thompson?
No, I was just going to move the motion to approve it, but obviously, somebody hasn't been communicating with them. It's not our responsibility or authority, and they should be approaching the provincial government. This has been debated in the past and hasn't materialized, but I understand where they're coming from, but it's not our issue, nor can we really have any impact on it. So, I proceed and file.
Okay, motion received and filed by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wang. Any other discussion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Mr. Clerk, are there any additional items for council? Okay, so then, we will go to subject MW 2011-25, Niagara Falls Soccer Club Indoor Facility Proposal.
Tim Chamberlain.
And I understand, Tim Chamberlain is here to lead the presentation. Welcome to, you step up to the mic there.
Evening, Mayor Doudadi, members of council. Obviously, everyone knows that we've done a couple different presentations on this to date. I've submitted another copy. I'd like to thank you all for the report that has come back, especially Kathy. I know she's been working hard with the soccer club in this matter. I've read the report, and the Niagara Falls Soccer Club is in favor of the P3 application, excuse me, to be submitted. We want to move forward immediately with this project with it being viable for the community. Time being of the essence, we do not want to wait for the P3 application to be awarded. Requesting that council grants the following, number one, waiver of development charges, waiver of building permit fees, waiver of site plan process fees, and we also request that city contributes and makes a commitment tonight to the 25% or the equivalent of the $1 million for the P3 program. And the, also, we are in agreement, per the report, heading financial implications that has come back to us, that staff recommended operations and maintenance be the responsibility of the Niagara Falls Soccer Club. So, I'm hoping that we can get a motion on the floor this evening to move this project forward.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chamberlain. Do we have some discussion? Counselor Peter Angelo, Thompson, and Kerrio.
Thank you, your worship. And once again, I think that the Boys Club should be commended for bringing us a project where they're asking us to support them, I guess financially, but they're not asking us for all the money. I mean, they're willing to step up to the plate. In the latest letter that Mr. Chamberlain had handed in today, Niagara Falls Soccer Club, they're saying they're in full support of the application to be made to go through the P3 process. Now, if we went through the P3 process, then what they're saying is that of the $4 million, that they would pay $3 million, and that they would be getting a million dollars from the federal government if the grant was approved. What they're asking council to guarantee is that million dollars should the P3 application not be approved. And I guess my question through you to either Mr. Todd or Mr. Harrison would be, would we be able to, I guess, give them the million dollars and then take it back if the federal government approves their application? I think that's what they're asking us for at this point.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'm just not sure. I think we'd have to, Counselor, look into what the terms of the P3 agreements would be. But I think in terms of the report that we put before council, our issue is trying to use this report, as you can see, staff is very supportive of the project, but trying to use this report to leverage that million dollars from another level of government. So, I think what we're trying to say here tonight in the report is that we have not identified an indoor soccer facility, either in our five-year capital budget or in our recreation master plan. The recreation master plan did talk about outdoor facilities, the addition of perhaps another artificial turf outdoors, but that's the dilemma we're caught in right now. It's not in our priority over the next five years. Certainly, that's at council's discretion in terms of how they deal with this matter tonight. But back to the million dollars in terms of guaranteeing it, I guess in a sense, you did something similar on the Boys and Girls Club, where there was an issue where there had to be either matching funds. We could certainly coach a resolution or something in that nature. They were fortunate to get the money, and then we had to come up with our own $2 million to match that. But I guess that would be the closest example I would give of how we dealt with the situation that before.
Okay, thank you. I guess I'd just like to say, your worship, that over the past 10 years, this council has taken a leadership role in recreational facilities in our community. I mean, we started off by building the community center, which houses the Y and a number of other organizations. From there, we went on to the Kaler Road Sports Park, and we invested in the Girls' Home for Soccer. We invested in the Boys and Girls Club, and we also invested millions of dollars in the Gale Center. I think it would behoove us to not put money into the Boys facility, as they're not asking us for $50 some dollars at this point. I'll let others speak before I put a motion on the floor.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I don't think anybody around the table would be opposed to working out a system and a method to pull this off, to have that facility in our community would certainly round out our recreational facilities. And the CIO indicated it's not in our five-year plan. It's not in the recreational five-year plan. It's not, mainly because of finances, I would imagine, because of the financial situation we're in right now. But I'm in favor of doing whatever we can to move forward with this, to support all of the efforts and the private sector people who are attempting to do this. I don't know whether a motion tonight is going to satisfy or solve that problem, because we want this to be a collective majority rule situation. I don't know whether that is there, but I'm in favor of getting our staff, working with this private sector people, to make all of this happen. And if there's a motion to recommend that, then that's fine. I'll support it.
Okay, Counselor Kerrio, Wang, then Iainoni?
Thank you, your worship. The other question I had was, what about the regional charges? Are we faced with regional fees as well? And then, should we be also asking the region on behalf, should we be sending a resolution to the region, asking for them to do the same thing that we're going to do for the facility?
Well, to you, Mr. Mayor. And if you recall, Counselor, we went through a similar thing with the Boys and Girls Club.
Yes.
They have control, and regional council would have to waive their portion. We're the collecting agency, and we have to collect that at time of building permit, so it would be up to the club to have to go there and get the region to give them the waiver of the fees of that as well.
I understand, but I think we should be the, we should have a resolution from the council stating what we're doing if this motion passes.
Yes.
And asking the region to follow suit.
That would be helpful.
And help them at the region if we can.
Yes, and that's what we did with the Boys and Girls Club. We wrote a letter of support.
But it's not in, it's not in the list, so I just said we should add it to the list of the things that we need to do for them. And then, I would also be in favor of some sort of motion to help them. I'm not sure exactly how right now in the funding model, but it would also, I would assume, be similar to what the Boys and Girls Club did, was when they came up with so much money, if the community came up with so much, we would come up with our share. I don't think, I'm not sure if I'd be in favor of putting our share up first, but I think I'd be in favor of if they can raise their share, that somehow, we would come up with our share.
Okay, good points. Counselor Wang, then Iainoni?
I'll begin by saying, Mr. Chamberlain has been doing an outstanding job at the helm of this organization, you know. That being said, though, you know, the staff have made it very clear that, and actually, there's a reminder to us that, you know, it's our responsibility as well as theirs to ensure that resources are focused on core city programs and services, and this is not something that's been identified as a short-term need in the community, and to proceed with committing money to it now would mean either hiking taxes or... taxes or bumping a project which has been identified as a more immediate need in the community. To invest at a, the report to partner with the Niagara Falls Soccer Club and invest approximately $2 million in a private recreation facility does not adhere to the city's financial priorities, and we all agree on those priorities. In fact, a lot of us campaigned on that sort of stuff as well. The staff have also pointed out on the last page of the city, not only does the city not have the funds to partner, it hasn't been our practice to partner on private facilities either. So even though this is a very worthwhile endeavor, it just doesn't fit what we're trying to do right now, nor the the financial challenges that we face. I mean, we're already, what, $75 million in debt? We just can't afford to take anything more on right now. That being said, though, I do like the recommendation, supporting it in principle, contributing in-kind services and technical support, and basically doing our utmost to help out, and also directing staff to submit an application to the P3 Canada Fund and continue investigating other possible grant and revenue opportunities. And when I reviewed the P3 Canada Fund Report, it seemed to me that this was an excellent candidate for that program. Funding under the P3 Canada Fund is allocated to projects that have meaningful private sector investment, and at least two of the four structural elements, design, build, operate, and finance. Definitely, this project has, you know, meets those criteria, and when you read through the P3 stuff, it looks like this is one that if it goes forward, should definitely fly, and if it doesn't, I'd be very surprised. So if, I think what I'm hearing around the table is that the recommendation that staff have come up with probably meets the concerns and still allows us to help with breaking the bank and or bumping another project in doing so, so I'll be happy to move the recommendation.
Okay. Counselor Aiononi?
I would be happy to second that, Mr. Mayor. And I also want to congratulate you guys for the job that you're doing. But the bottom line is, we don't have $1 million. And it's very interesting, Counselor Gates brought the position before about a city park that was falling apart, being jacked up by boards, and we wanted it fixed, and it got, the discussion became, well, how many of our parks are having equipment being jacked up by boards, and can we afford to fix that one park, and do we have to catalyst it, catalyst it to the rest of the parks? We can't afford to fix our own parks en masse right now. I don't know where we would get the money to put into this project. And if we were going to look at, according to staff, bumping off another project, do we tell the project we're going to bump so that they can come lobby us too? Or do we just bump them and tell them, you've been waiting X amount of years, and now we're going to bump you? I mean, the bottom line is, I mean, to simplify it at all, we just don't have the money. So I, I, I think following staff's recommendations is good. Counselor Morocco and I just attended a P3 convert, breakout session for FCM. It was the last day of the conference. And while they were, they did make a point to clarify that they are focusing on water, wastewater, and energy projects. According to the guidelines, we have, this would fall into one of the projects too. So I would wholeheartedly agree it, providing we not put any city money forward that we don't have.
Okay. Are there any other comments? Counselor Gates, Counselor Pierangelo?
Yes. Thanks, Mayor Doudadi. Just a couple of questions. If this thing's built, who's going to own it?
Who is going to own it?
Yeah.
Well, there was a couple of different opportunities there that we were looking at, considering putting the land back into the city's name, even though, well, we've got $75,000 into the property invested already, and made our first tax payment last week. We were hoping that we could keep the building in our name and possibly even continue the same type of partnership that we have at Mitchelson Park right now. Although, we're not asking the city at the $1 million for the 50 percent like we have at Mitchelson. It's basically about a 75-25 ratio of us coming up with 75 percent on approximately a $4 million project.
No, I get that.
So there's a couple of opportunities there that we were looking, basically, to offset the property taxes. What is going to work? Now, do we deal with the region? Do we put the property back into the city's name and become tax exempt? I'm already making applications to become, I just got off the phone this morning, actually, with our auditor from Crawford, Smith &amp; Swallow, continue the Niagara Falls Soccer Club name, but put the association into a charitable foundation also, to become exempt from the taxes. So there's a few different ways that we can go about it.
I'd also like to ask our CIO to comment on that.
And thank you, Counselor Tim. That's, I guess, the best example we could use on this project is that, from a city perspective, we don't want to own it, we don't want to run it. What we'd like to do is, if you are making any financial contribution to it, that we would get some guarantee back of community hours in that facility. And for the tax exemption part, if they're a not-for-profit, as Tim has indicated, then they could have or apply for tax exemption status for our local taxes as charity. So similar to kind of, I guess, again, with the Boys and Girls Club, you know, they, they're in a similar situation of that, where we made a contribution. We don't own it, we don't want to run it, we don't want to have to pay for operating, ongoing operating costs that would put additional burden back. It would just be basically giving them money for it, or getting the money through a P3 arrangement, but then somehow trying to garner some public hours that it would have, the public would have access to going and use that facility.
I see our solicitor would like to jump in just one second.
Sorry.
Mr. Beaman?
I think I'll just keep my powder dry at the moment. Thank you.
Oh, keep your powder dry. Okay, all right. Thank you. Counselor?
Just to Mr. Todd, so it's, definitely would be set up a lot different than the Boys and Girls is today, where we, we basically maintain it with city employees. So you don't want to get into a situation like that. You, you want it to be run by the boys.
Yeah.
On it separately from the city.
Boys and Girls Club now, we have nothing to do with it. We have no employees, we have no responsibility for maintenance. Once a year, this council gives them a grant, and that's it. And that's, that's the kind of arrangement we want to have, where we're not taking on any additional financial risk or any financial, any additional burdens for operating.
But when that was built, with the girls on the 50-50 split, city employees did work there at that, at one time.
At the Boys and Girls Club?
No, at the, I'll do it, sorry, Boys and Girls, Girls Home for Soccer.
Oh, okay, Girls.
Because I'm trying to do soccer with soccer. I apologize.
Girls, Girls Home for Soccer is a different arrangement. We do maintain and run the fields. It's our property. That's a bit different situation.
Than what we're heading into.
Yeah, this is a, this is a, this would be more akin to a Boys and Girls kind of scenario than it would a Girls Soccer scenario. Yes.
Okay. Counselor Pierangelo?
Thanks, your worship. If I could just have some clarification, the recommendation that's on the floor right now is just to approve the three recommendations that are in the report. Okay. And then I'd like to ask the mover if it would be a friendly amendment, if we could add that the city's contribution be limited as well to $1 million, and that failing a successful P3 application, that the city then put its money in?
There's none.
Not friendly. I'll put it on the floor after, your worship.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other comments on the motion? So the motion is, yeah, Counselor Carrillo, then Morocco?
I ask, would you entertain putting in the other, the, to help them with the region? To help them with the region, that they'd also, they're asking for a waiver of development charges, waiver of building fees. That's what you're, you're moving?
Yeah.
And the other one, waiver of site plan processing fees. And then I just, the fourth one, that we would help them with the region, to see if we could get the same thing done at the region.
So it's, yeah, so a system and.
Right.
Yeah, that's.
Okay. And Counselor Morocco?
Your worship, I just have one question. I, I think the facility is a great idea. Too bad we didn't have the money, and especially when you go to law and you see the soccer complex that they have there, for heaven's sakes. But aside from that, it says that point two, the recommendation is the city's contribution be limited to in-kind. What is the amount that we're looking at in-kind services to be included in that? What is that number?
Mr. Mayor, I think we're anticipating.
In-kind services and technical support.
Somewhere around $100,000 in terms of, you know, site servicing, negotiating, that type of thing for the leases with the hydro.
So that would be over and above the million that they're looking for as well?
I believe so, yes. Yeah.
Yeah, it's separate from the million, right? That they're two, two separate things that we're looking at. That'll, we'll entertain that in our next motion. Is there any other discussion around the motion, which is basically the recommendation plus the region, support of the region? Yes, Counselor Maves?
I think one just has to go to Mitchelson Park on a Saturday morning and see the activity there. We have to support this, and I, I wholeheartedly support Counselor Pierangelo's motion, and I think we should probably go with that one, along with chasing the region for helping with the development charges, if we can do that.
Okay. Then let's call the vote. All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. And any opposed? No? Okay. And next, Counselor Pierangelo?
Thanks, your worship. And again, I know it's already been said, but I think what the Boys Club is saying to us right now is that they're looking to put a $4 million facility in our community, which I think would be a great enhancement to soccer, as well as a lot of other sports that Mr. Chamberlain has identified in his letter, in this municipality. It's a great addition to what we already have here. And what they're saying is that of the $4 million, they'll come up with $3 million. All they want is, they want a million dollars. Now, we're going through the P3 application process. Should that fail, they want the city to guarantee that they will put in the million dollars if the federal government does not. I don't think that that's such a stretch. I think if we look at the recreational facilities that we've built, again, in the last decade, for the Community Center, we funded 60 percent of it. For the Kaler Road Sports Park, we funded 50 percent of it. For the Boys and Girls Club, we funded just under 17 percent of it. For the Gale Center, we funded almost 100 percent of it. And for this one here, we're being asked to only fund 25 percent. And that's a maybe. That's only if their application is not successful. I don't understand why we would hold up their project and not commit to the million dollars. So I'd like to put a motion on the floor, your worship, that the city does back the club for a million dollars, and that if there's, and that if their application is successful, then the club can reimburse the city that million dollars.
Okay. Motion by Counselor Pierangelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Any discussion? Counselor Aiononi?
Through you to Mr., to Counselor Pierangelo, I would say we don't have any money because we did build all those things. And once you, once you finance them, once you finance them, you have to pay for them. And we are on, I think, our fourth year, Mr. Mayor, of staff telling us how broke we are. It's not even a joke anymore. We know we're broke. I, I think we have well provided the residents of this community with recreational facilities. I, I have no guilt sleeping at night that we have not endorsed recreational facilities, and we're now paying the tune for them. What I would like to know from Counselor Pierangelo is, if we guarantee that million dollars, what project, and how do we go about picking a project that we delay, and/or are we debenturing and changing the levy? Like, I'm curious as to, how are we going to pay for this million dollars?
Would you like me to single-handedly do it, or should it be a discussion of council?
No, I'm asking you. It's your motion.
Because when you stood up, because when you stood up and made the motion to give the Boys and Girls Club $2 million, no one asked you at that point how you're going to pay for it. If you'd like me to single-handedly comment on how I can do it, give me the power to do it, and I'll do it. Otherwise, it'll be up to discussion in this council.
Thank you.
Okay, Counselor.
Had you stood up and asked, I'd have told you. But you didn't. So I'm asking you, you've put a motion on the floor, you want support of it. How are we going to pay for it? Because staff has told us exactly what we're going to do here. So rather than pandering, all I want to know is, where are we getting the money?
I don't think that's a question, really, we can answer here today. I mean, obviously, there, yeah, but we have choices. We take it from somewhere else, or we have to raise the, raise a levy, or we look at other creative means. I mean, I don't think we're asking them to actually decide that, because us as a council will make that decision. But counselors, I've got a few hands up here. I've got Counselor.
To that point.
Yes.
Then, Mr. Mayor, if this motion goes through, and staff decides we have to bump a project, I'd like to know beforehand, what project we're bumping? Are they being told they're being bumped, and do they have an opportunity to come to council and lobby us too? Because it would seem to me, we have a lot of things, we have the riot, the, we have residents who have asked for things to be fixed in their areas forever and today. And it kind of shocked me when we couldn't have the park looked at ASAP, because that would set a precedent for the rest of our spending. So I, I do think everything financial is crucial to us at this moment. So entertaining a project that comes to us late in the day is not something I think we can afford to do.
Okay. We got Counselor Wing, Counselor Thompson, Counselor Maves.
Another difference between this current project and the Gale Center, the Boys and Girls Club, and the McBean Community Center, is those all hinged on replacing aging community facilities? The old YMCA building needed replacing, the Boys and Girls Club building needed replacing. We had three arenas that needed replacing, and what we have now are three new facilities that our community won't have to worry about replacing for, I don't know, at least 30 years, I hope, 40, 50, 60. That'd be great. I'm also hoping that along the way, so we have the ability and the foresight to set up sinking funds, so that when the Gale Center needs replacing, we're not, you know, some future council isn't in the same boat. We find ourselves now with $75 million to pay off. It goes a lot more smoothly if you save in advance and you have the money in hand to pay for big-ticket items than if you go into debt and try and pay for them after the fact. But, you know, we're at the point where we can't even fix up our playground facilities. As great as it would be to have another facility to add to the nice little collection we already have, we just can't afford to do it. The money just isn't there.
Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, I, I look at this with a great deal of enthusiasm. This is a project that would be wonderful, unique for this community. And I, I think that that discussion about what is deleted or how we do that happens as we go through the, the process. If we approve this, it gives them the backing and the opportunity to make the applications, to go out into the community, to do their fundraising. And if it doesn't work for them, then we, we don't have a liability and responsibility. If it works for them, what is the other option? We have a great facility, and we're going to have to make some tough decisions on how we're going to accomplish that. So I look at that, something down the road. To dash this at this particular time, would I, I think, dash the whole opportunity for all of the work and effort and everything that has been done to this point to try to accomplish that objective. So we'll deal with it down the road, as we do with many other things.
Okay. Counselor Maves?
Yeah, I just, I'm obviously in support of this motion. The other thing is, I just wanted to say, I'm getting a little tired of hearing that our city is broke. We've got, we've got close to $1 billion in assets. We owe $72 million. You tell me any business that's worth $1 billion that only owes 72 million, and I'm saying that's a pretty good business. So I don't think we should keep sending the message out to the public, we're broke. The city's very well-run, and we're well-financed, and I don't see any problem. And I don't see a problem that we should go, shouldn't go forward with this, with this motion.
Okay. Okay. Is there any other, yeah, Mr. Clerk?
Well, I see a little bit of a dilemma with the motion, in the sense that you just approved a report that said the city's contribution be limited to in-kind services and technical support. Now, you're putting a motion on the floor to, to put forward a million dollars. Now, if you want me to ignore the be limited to, that's fine, but as far as the recommendation report, I don't know how you reconcile those two.
I guess if I need to be specific in my motion, your worship, then I'll leave it up to Mr. Peter.
Okay. So allow the clerk to wordsmith the motion.
He's the only one that's worried.
I've got, excuse me, I've got Counselor Carrillo.
Can you change your motion?
No, no, he's not going to change your motion. He's saying to change his own motion. Counselor Carrillo?
Just some clarity on the motion, your worship. If we vote on the motion, we vote to do this motion, I want to know exactly what it means. Are we voting to commit this council to $1 million, when and only when the group raises its share, or are we suggesting that we front them? Because it's a big difference to me. I, I don't know if I'd want to support the motion if, if we're going to front the $1 million before they raise their money. I think that at this council, we, when we, we looked at the Boys and Girls Club, we decided that we would give them the money if they went on to the community and raised their share of the money. I think that would be the, the most prudent thing to do, if we're going to do this, to make sure that they can raise their money, that they can get the money and the support that they, that they think they can. And then and only then, would I be prepared to say, we'll come up with our share.
May we get clarification from the mover? Counselor?
Your worship, I think that if you want the club to guarantee that they've raised the million dollars before the city gives the contribution, I think that's fair. I don't believe that we did that with the Boys and Girls Club. I don't believe that we asked them.
It's part of the notion.
You can ask Mr. Arcita, but I don't believe that we told them to let us see their $2 million before we forwarded them over $2 million, Your Worship.
Okay. Yeah, I've got, once I've clarification, and then Counselor Iannone, CAO.
But if I could just clarify that, we did not, with all due respect, we did not release any of our funds until their money was in place on the other side. So once the provincial and federal grant was in place for $8 million, that's at the point that we started releasing our funds through our treasury.
Not necessarily their funds.
Not, not...
Oh, no, not their funds, but project funds.
Exactly.
Yes. So we had to make sure that at least $8 million, they have not, to this point, completed raising all of their money.
I know that.
But we waited until the $8 million of the $12 million project, or whatever, was in place, and we did not release any of that money up to that point. So, you know, this is something you may want to consider, that if we're asked for a million-dollar guarantee, at what point, with, I guess, $3 million on the soccer club side, at what point would we release any of our funds to them? It's a good point. We did not release any to the Boys and Girls Club until at least that $8 million of the approximately $12 million was in place.
But that was theirs.
A portion of it was theirs, but they certainly had not met their $2 million. I think they had around, just a little bit under a million. They still have not met their $2 million as we speak today.
Okay. Yes?
Can I make a comment?
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
I've got naming rights. Obviously, everyone had a package that evening that we were looking to sell the name of the facility for $750,000. I've got a commitment, that when I walk out the door, depending on the decision that's made tonight, I have the naming rights sold for the building at 750. The land, we've already, you know, we've purchased, additional $75,000, additional $260,000 into Mitchelson Park that we have invested into that property, which ultimately would go back to the city in the, within the next couple of years, if we can get some more soccer fields made. And regarding the three new facilities, they're fabulous facilities, but I'm spending over $200,000 a year to Sinex Avenue to run youth programs, and our kids have nowhere to go to train in the wintertime for soccer. They're leaving and heading down the community. So what I did is, a couple of years ago, is I went to Sinex, met Mr. Mueller and a few other gentlemen, worked on agreement. And for the past two winters, we've been donating and contributing, not donating, but contributing, over $200,000 to their private enterprise, which the money is leaving and going down the highway to the three owners from Hamilton. Now, this winter, I have approximately 1,000 travel children. We went from 650 to just under 2,000 kids in the association. I'm going to need a facility for approximately 1,000 kids or more this winter to train in. Regarding Mr. Todd's comments about the portion, I'm trying to break down the barrier so we don't end up in the same situation as Kaler Road. We don't even get any time at Kaler Road for the kids in our community, or in our soccer club. Very, very minimal. That's why this is so necessary, to have another facility. And I've also spoke to a few people regarding that. I want to be the guy that breaks down the barriers, that we start working together, have Niagara United Soccer Club come in there at a minimal cost, just like we use the Kaler Road complex. So both associations do not have to amalgamate, but at least we can work together. And we have started that process four years ago, when I took over, in sharing the schools and the property, so one group doesn't get all their permits in, the other group doesn't get any practice fields. For four years now, we've been sitting down together with their field chairman, working together. I'd like to continue that working relationship with staff, with the city, and also bring in Niagara United involved in that, regarding the comments, so other groups get a chance to use the facility. I know there is nothing like that set up now on Kaler Road. It's basically first right, whatever's left over, all the other groups get to use. We all know that that's not working. This can, this is an opportunity to satisfy every child, basically, in the community who wants to play soccer.
Okay. Is there any other comments of council? Because I think we were ready to move forward on the vote. So just for clarification on the motion, it's to support them with their P3 application, and if they are not successful, that we would be there with the million dollars. Is that correct, Counselor?
Yeah, except, Your Worship, I don't believe that the club feels that they can wait until the P3 application comes back to see whether or not they're successful. So what they're asking the city for is, they're asking the city to guarantee that million dollars.
Right.
If their application is successful, then it will give the city back the money. If not, then that would be our contribution to the project. That's what they're asking us for.
Okay. Mr. Harrison, you want to comment?
So effectively, Mr. Mayor, if I understand it correctly, if we were to forward any money to the group, it would be actually a loan contingent upon the P3 application results. That's effectively what you're suggesting, is it not? Because it's not a grant, because a grant would not have any strings attached. It's...
I guess you're right. It would be a loan until we find out at such time that the application was successful.
Is there any other questions, Counselor Maves?
Just, Timmy, on this, the reason why you don't want to wait, because the grant would take probably somewhere six months along.
A year.
Takes longer than that. So if we wait here, then you're looking at going another winter without an indoor thing. Now, how long would it take to, if it got okay today, how long would it take to build the facility? You guys have any idea?
Well, the construction drawings are, have already been started, and the deposit has already been given to the architect and engineer. We're getting ready for the site plan to be submitted downstairs. Probably looking at some point, just into the new year, around Christmas time, that we could have this thing up and running. Steel prefab building. If we get a commitment, we can start on the groundwork and flatwork, sewers, water, et cetera. And I believe it takes approximately two to three months for the structure to be delivered. So we could prepare everything in that timeframe. When it's delivered, obviously erect the steel structure. There's quite a few groups involved that have been calling me. I sat with the owner from Alpha Dome two, well, three days ago, for almost two hours, and he says, "I want to help you guys. I want to put this thing up for you guys." So the support around the community is huge. It's just getting the commitment so that they know that, you know what, we're all together, let's move forward, and we can start breaking ground on this.
Okay. You've, does everyone understand the motion? Counselor Iannone?
So the motion is, we spend a million dollars.
Well, if they're unsuccessful with their P3, it's, so it's basically, it's a loan
They need it now.
That can be forgiven. Well, yeah. But if they get their P3, then they would give it back to the city. Okay? Does everyone understand the motion? Yes, I'm sorry, the CAO would like to come?
I just wanted to make sure, Tim, with, are you proceeding with the club becoming a not-for-profit or a charitable status?
Yes, we've already applied for the Trillium Foundation, which was recommended when we met downstairs. I've got the application in for the Trillium Foundation, met with the auditor, and spoke to him again this morning about the charitable foundation, the application. Kathy has given me the hard copies of it. That is being submitted probably within the next few days.
Okay. So the status of your club will be a not-for-profit kind of club, rather than a private business?
Correct. The language from the auditor from Crawford Smith and Swallow says, "You can stay as you are now, as a Niagara Falls Soccer Club, Inc., and we just convert you into a charitable foundation."
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Mainly to offset property taxes, et cetera.
Yes, Mr. Harrison.
Again, we've done these other arrangements. We've did it with the, where we have a loan, I think of the animal...
Humane Society.
The Humane Society, and with the Optimist Club. Sorry. These groups are already nonprofit organizations, established charities. I'm just raising the flag that maybe we have to have, before we were to raise any, to forward any money, we would need to have a surety that this truly is a nonprofit organization that meets the, that meets the requirements.
Since 1959, this association has been in Niagara Falls, running viable. I think this association is very, very well-established in this community.
Certainly.
52 years up and running now. And I'm very, very proud to have the numbers, both boys and girls, men and women, over or just around the 2,000 mark. I don't have my final numbers in yet, but we do have a lot of people in this community playing soccer.
Is this...
And we are a not-for-profit association.
Right. Okay. All right. Okay, I'm going to call the motion. All those in favor? Okay, yeah, we'll read the motion. Mr. Clerk, would you read the motion?
Well, what I understand the motion be is that the city commit a million dollars to the project, subject to the success of the P3 application.
So if they're successful with their P3 application, then they'll give the money back to the city. So it's a commitment to help them move forward on the project. All those in favor? Okay? Opposed? Okay, it's approved.
You won't regret it.
Okay. Speaking of P3 applications, our next report, MW 2011-26, we've got a recommendation here. Are there any members of council that would like to address the report? Counselor Iannone, Counselor Wing?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Considering the newspaper article, I think it was today's paper, in regards to the market, I'm glad to see Sylvia Place Market Transit Terminal in here. We're working with a transit committee, trying to find a central hub. Main and Ferry have been trying to get the Sylvia Place Market up and running forever. We read that article about the gentleman who is just not making a go of it at Sylvia Place Market. You and I had the opportunity in Halifax to go to their market on the Saturday and Sunday, and it was thriving, and it was packed, and it was a beautiful part of Halifax. So it would be good to see this actually be a go, it would actually clean up the area behind our new investment into our museum. So I was glad to see that included in the application.
Okay. Counselor Wing, then Counselor Peter Angelo.
And in our handouts at the very back, there's a letter from the Main and Ferry BIA saying that they have informally discussed this, and so, you know, there's an informal commitment to financially contribute to the construction of a replacement farmer's market building with either a Main Street or Ferry Street facade. The CIP identified that is the number-one thing to be done for the revitalization of that area. And with, you know, with this sort of thing, the, I know the new streetlights, they're really creating a buzz, and this would help keep that momentum going in terms of revitalizing the area. Also, I should note that the number-five project in the list, the table at the back, the Lundys Lane Gateway Walkway, the Lundys Lane BIA is re-visiting that commitment. They, there's a new board, new directions. They've made a, you know, they've undertaken some new financial commitments that weren't in existence in 2009. So that contribution from the private sector likely won't be as sizable as what's listed in the table. So just sort of a heads-up for staff to touch, you know, whoever the staff members preparing the applications, already touch base with the chair regarding that.
Okay. We've got Counselor Peter Angelo and Counselor Maves.
Thank you, Worship. I think that all of the applications that are in the report are worthy applications. I do hope that the mover realizes that the city would still be on the hook for close to $4 million, like four times the amount that we just gave to the Boys Club, should we be successful with the market. Although I won't try to embarrass her by asking how she'll pay for it tonight. Anyway, Your Worship, I wanted to talk more to the report. And the report is about P3 projects, and P3 projects have to do with public and private partnerships, where you get some money from the public, you get some money from the private sector, and you form a partnership. And when I look at this report here, what I see is almost like a staff wish list. So I guess what I'm asking is, did we ever put it out there to the public to see what type of partnerships are actually there? Or did we just look internally at our own books and say, "Well, jeez, these are great projects that I would love to somehow find money for"? Did we ever put it out to the public? Because there might be some public people out there that have money that are willing to invest it in an actual P3 model. I mean, a lot of these projects on here, they don't really seem to jump out to me as being true P3 models. I don't know. That's my thought.
It is a fair comment. We did have some discussion about that at our staff meeting, and there is going to be a, this is the third, there's going to be a fourth, and we talked exactly about that. Unfortunately, the timing of all this, in order to kind of get your projects in and get them submitted by the deadline, which is in two weeks, we have some ideas that are out there, that we're developing now, that will be in that vein of private sector, more private sector partnership. They were so, they were so early in the development stage, we didn't feel comfortable bringing them forward at this time. But we're proposing on having those ready for the 2012 round, where it's the fourth round of the, this program.
Well, can I ask, I mean, how long did we know about this deadline for?
It's only been out for, you know, just, I don't know, a few weeks, or is about all we've got to have in...
That's all. Okay. Can we, can we then put out a notification, at least, to the public that talks about this program? I mean, I'm interested to see what private sector people would come forward and say, "I have a project. I have a great project that'll benefit the entire community. I'll put in half the money, you know, if we can get funding for the other half." And if it's something that really benefits the community as a whole, then why shouldn't Mr. Felicetti, like our economic development director, have a look at it and say, "You know what? This would be a great benefit for the city. This is a true P3 model." I don't think we've actually gone out to the public and tried to solicit their opinion.
No, and that's a fair comment, and we can certainly do that. Actually, Mr. Felicetti, there's a few ideas and projects that are already in the works, and we can go out and try to solicit more. As I say, with this one, and you're quite right, Counselor, some of these are projects that we tried to identify that had some private sector involvement, but they were really projects already on our radar. And, you know, we have not gone and solicited the private sector for it.
Like, are these true P3 projects if they don't have any public sector funding?
Well, the couple there that we don't have any funding identified with private sector, there is some private sector component to it, because under the program, they just have to meet, it doesn't necessarily always have to be money. It could be development, or they could actually construct it. So there's five, five components, and they only have to meet two, I believe, of it, so...
So it's not really a component that you have to meet is private dollars?
It's one of the five.
Oh, it's one of the five.
But there's, I think you only have to meet two to qualify, two of the five.
Because the one that jumps, the one that jumps out at me is the Sylvia Place Market. And I mean, like, I think everyone around this council would love to see that one go forward. But right now, as we're submitting it, I'm hoping that we don't negate the project by not having any private sector dollars in it. That's what I'm hoping. So, Your Worship, I guess if the motion's already on the floor, I'd like to add to the motion that the city do put, does put an advertisement in local media inviting private people to come and talk to Mr. Felicetti about projects that they may have. We might be surprised with what comes forward.
Fair enough. Yes, Counselor?
Thank you. Three-zero Boston, Mr. Mayor. Anyway, through the...
Did I ask? I didn't think I asked.
Just thought I'd tell you. Through the P3 seminar that Counselor Morocco and I sat through, it's very interesting to see this application and this come from staff, because they, they told us, they were tightening up the reins. Actually, Counselor Morocco actually taped the whole seminar, so maybe when we figure out a way to get it to everybody. Because when we left, staff had said, "Can you please pay close attention to the 3P infrastructure project?" And to Counselor Peter Angelo's question, they let it out May 4th, the applications have to be in June 30th. He said, "Our window of opportunity to the municipalities is so..." is so small, it better be so tight, you better be able to get it in. But they, they pretty much said, don't give us frivolous projects. It better be major infrastructure for a city. It better, it better fund to, and, and the reason I talked about the transit terminal is, we've had a report come to us that say, it's gonna cost us $6 million to fix our service center, and we really need a central hub. So I'm hoping that when they're talking about major projects, this, this guy was really cut and dry, and he said, you know, I'm the last session, it's probably your most boring. It was. But we took pages and pages of notes, and it would seem to me it's getting harder and harder to get this money. So I, I'm hoping out of the projects we put through, something comes through. Because he, he basically said to the municipalities, you better go back and tell your counselors, it's much harder to get this money now. And he highlighted wastewater, sewer, energy, and major land development. That's what he said. And, and I said, did I misunderstand that? He said, no. So they're really, given a six-week window to municipalities or a seven-week window, it's almost saying, I hope you fail. It's less money we have to give you. So it's certainly not user-friendly.
So there was a recommendation for friendly amendment, to go to the public and ask if there's any other-
Ask you for the next one.
For the, for the next round?
Yeah.
Okay, Mr. Clerk?
Well, I don't actually have a motion on the floor, but I understand the intent of the amendment.
I'll make the motion, and I'll end it.
Okay.
I'll second.
Okay, well, then, we'll deal with our first, we have a motion, don't we, already?
No.
I thought that you-
It was on the first.
Yeah, you did, you made it, and you seconded it.
No.
Yeah, because then he was-
For the P3?
Oh, the P3.
Yeah, it was given to the gears, right? About, I'm not gonna ask her where the money's gonna come from?
That's it.
Okay, all right, so there's a motion on the floor. Are there any other comments?
This is all we-
Any other comments? No. Call the motion, all those in favor. All right. Counselor Peter Angelo, you gonna call us a follow-up motion?
Oh, that was an friendly amendment that we had to pass the public?
No, she didn't agree to it. Did you, did you agree to it?
Yeah.
Oh, you, yeah, but you're saying for next year. Is that for next application?
Yeah.
Well, this one closes in two weeks, I mean, we have to act the public, but-
You know, Your Worship, I, I think if anyone would like to come forward, if they're watching the meeting and talk to Mr. Fellasetti, I would invite them to do so. I mean, we have no idea what's out there, you know, but it would be worthwhile exploring. Now, I know Mr. Todd said that there's tight timelines, June 30th. I mean, I guess if anyone does come to Mr. Fellasetti, he would report to this council by next meeting. Barring that, barring that, perhaps we can, perhaps we can put an advertisement in the local media for the next round, Your Worship.
Okay. Mr. Clerk?
Well, I mean, what I took the motion to mean, and I think echoing what Mr. Todd's saying, is that we would put forward any of those projects for the fourth intake, because it's anticipated that there would be a fourth intake.
But at the same time, if I understand correctly, Counselor Peter Angelo's saying, if anyone comes forward now, between now and our 27th meeting, they still do have time. Pardon me?
But Serge can report.
Right, so Serge, you can, Mr. Fellasetti, you can report that at our next meeting, the 27th? All right. So did you make that motion, or did we?
I got the vote.
Okay, we're ready to move on. Okay, and also, we've got a resolution here that, that we need to move? Need to move the resolution?
I assume by approval of the report, you're moving all the resolutions.
Okay, so the resolution's been moved, all right. You know, the "assume" stands well. Okay, we are moving on to the consent agenda. Counselor Inoni wants to move the consent agenda, seconded, says or seconded to move the consent agenda?
No.
Okay, no, we, some people want to pull some items for the consent agenda. Counselor Thompson?
Should we pull 06, 33, 12, and we'll see what happens with five?
You might as well go.
Do you want to, let's just go through each one, then. Okay, F 2011-26, 2011, the bench is moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Any discussion on that one?
Yeah, can I add 27 to that motion?
No, 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 we're just moving the, oh, you want to move the first two?
Yeah.
Okay, you're moving 26 and 27, seconded by Counselor Carrio. Yes, okay, all those in favor? Thank you. MW 2011-06, Fruit Belt Parkway Reconstruction Project, who wants to speak that? Counselor Thompson?
Yeah, just $800,000. It's probably, it's a municipal loan, so we don't have any, we have to look at for roadways. Huge, heavy equipment on that. It's probably gonna have to be built, be built to special, special specifications. And I see that Mr. Culinary has come forward and suggested an opportunity to take some pressure off of the municipality, but I don't see anything modern, who certainly are the other major heavy equipment people moving there. Has there, through you, has there been any discussion? Are they going to assist in any way, or is there any other kind of cost sharing to help the municipality because of the unique circumstances? One roadway in, which really was, I think initially a private road. Can anybody comment on that?
Yeah, Mr. Holman?
Mr. Mayor, they've been at the table through all the negotiations. I believe the arrangements that they have made have been internal with Mr. Culinary, that we're not really privy to. There are some in-kind contributions that they're providing, like a temporary access road, so that they can continue their operations during construction of this road, but they're not technically a party to this development agreement.
And you're satisfied with the arrangements that have been made here? Obviously, Mr. Culinary has been, uh, very generous in his, the road must be in really bad shape.
Yeah, it's in horrible condition, and, you know, because it really only benefits two property owners here, it would be difficult for us to, to make this a priority project in our next five years. This is really the only way we can make it happen.
Okay, all right. Counselor Wing?
Uh, yes, I just realized, I had my, I'd flagged this one, and I was wondering, option three, um, having the divestiture of the asset and go back to being a private road, maybe would eliminate the city's exposure to risk and avoid the capital cost. Were the, the landlords willing to consider that?
Mr. Holman?
Uh, Mr. Mayor, they did for, for quite some time, but came back with this proposal as kind of a counterproposal. They'd like to keep it as a public road. It, it helps satisfy their issue, their issues with respect to complying with the zoning bylaw, and then they're not tied up in these private, um, joint-use condominium type of agreements that make it awkward to, uh, to manage from a maintenance point of view. Who's gonna plow the road, or those types of things. They would prefer this, this option. And it also gives, gives them the opportunity to sever the law in the future, had they ever, if they ever ran into, you know, or if that need ever arose. We've given them the opposite, the, the proposal, they've reviewed it and came back with this counterproposal.
Thank you. And Mr. Beeman, do you like to comment?
I was gonna ask if, if the resolution could be amended to include potty wood homes if necessary, because there's, I believe the land that is going to be transferred as part of the subdivision is actually owned by Mr. Culinary's other, other, uh-
Entity.
But it's all the same gentleman who's in charge of the operation. And my understanding just from the conversation I've had with Mr. Backer, with Mr. Culinary, is that there are arrangements with modern concerning financial contribution, which we are privy to actually in terms of the repair of Mr. Culinary's statue.
Okay, Counselor?
I know, quite frankly, I'm just concerned about the amount it's going to cost, and if that kind of activity continues to occur on it, how long are we expecting the reconstructed road to last?
Mr. Holman, are they gonna be building it a little differently than currently?
Well, no, we've, we've had it designed and estimated by an independent consulting engineer, so we're comfortable with the number. It's, uh, we took the average prices. It's going to be, they're going to have extra depth granular, it's going to have extra depth asphalt. It's going to be designed and built to withstand the, the type of loading that it's currently handling. So we're looking at 40 years, 45 years.
And although it's only two businesses, it's hundreds of employees down that street too, so it is a significant employer. Counselor Carrio?
I was just gonna add that, Your Worship. I, I know no one likes the fact that there's just two businesses, but they're very large employers. They create a lot of employment for the municipality. There are a lot of people that work in those two businesses, so it's difficult to look at them as just two properties. They're two large employers, employing a lot of people, so.
Do you want to make the motion then, since you're on it?
I sure.
Okay, moved by Counselor Carrio, seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Any further discussion? All those in favor? All right, thank you. Next, PD 2011-33, commercial building facade improvements. Counselor Thompson?
Yes, um, I, first of all, I moved the motion, but this has to do with the CIP program in the Main and Ferry area. And I have been assisting two properties on Main Street with their facade improvements. I got applications for them. I was dealing with Mr. Bolabrook, and he said, well, you can make the application, but there are no funds available. So I'm wondering, and, and he made the suggestion that there might be an opportunity to move some funds from other brownfield or CIP funds to this area. These two properties are very anxious to go ahead, would make a huge difference on, on Main Street. And I'm wondering if we could have a report back, in fact, that, has there been some discussions on this through years of the CIP?
Mr. Mayor, we have had some discussions about this at, at our staff meetings, but if, if, it would be helpful if the council wanted to report back, and that could formalize it.
We could have a report back, because these people want to go ahead with this, they don't want to go ahead and cut out the opportunity to take advantage of the CIP grants. That's what it's for, these people are trying to do it, and we don't have the funds. So let's have a report back and see what's going on.
So you're making that motion?
I'll make the motion.
Seconded by Counselor Wing. Counselor Wing?
And it sounds like I had the same conversation with Mr. Bolabrook this morning, because I was getting complaints last year from some of the area business people who wanted to put in CIP applications, but were told by somebody at City Hall that, no, we're not taking applications, there's no monies left. So I was very concerned when I saw this one come in as well, and he reassured me and said, no, um, people were, you know, even though there wasn't the money there, uh, applications were still acceptable. And he asked me to have anybody who thought they had been dissuaded from putting in an application to please give him a call, and I told him about one in particular I knew of, and I said, will you please call them? And so hopefully he followed through on that. As soon as I saw this, I had, I had the same concerns about people last year being, oh, sorry, too late, money's all gone, don't even bother buying.
Okay. Any other conversation on this one? Okay, we'll call the motion. All those in favor? All right, it's approved. Matters arising, PD 2011-38, Municipal Heritage Committee, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Wing. Any discussion? All those in favor? Okay. RNC 2011-10, request to name section four of the Millennium Trail, and I'm guessing, all right, moved by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Thompson. Is there any discussion on this?
Your Worship, I think it's-
Yes, and I see we've got Mr. Cummings in the audience here. Do you hear, did you want to speak to this one at all, Dan?
No, I just supported it.
Okay, Dan's here from the Recreation Committee, and here to support Paisley on the, on the renaming. So if there's no discussion on the renaming, all those in favor. It's unanimous. Okay, we'll have some discussion.
First of all, should there be any discussion?
No.
Absolutely. If ever there was a person in the community who has given back more than she has taken, it's Paisley January Poole. She was a wonderful council member for many, many years. Prior to that, her entire family, her father and mother, were so good to this community. In fact, we probably wouldn't have had minor hockey in this city or competitive hockey at our arena without Dr. Potter and his financial support over the many, many years. And Paisley, without exception, does not pass up anything where she can help, regardless of what it is. She's a dynamic person, and I'm delighted to support this, but this is so insignificant for the effort and the work that she's, she's just a wonderful person, and she's my cousin, so I'm happy to-
Counselor Peter Angelo?
Your Worship, I think I'd be remiss if I didn't say a couple words. Back in 94, when I first came to Council, Paisley was the one that I sat beside, and I was astounded as to how great of a supporter she was of recreational activities and recreational facilities in the city of Niagara Falls. I, I believe, and Wayne can correct me if I'm wrong, but she's the one that started the Sports Wall of Fame there in Niagara Falls, and, and she's been on the Recreation Commission, which is now a committee forever and a day. So I, I don't believe that I've ever sat with a person that supported more recreational things than she has, Your Worship. Very fitting.
Yeah. I'd have to agree. When I was on the Recreation Commission in the early 90s, same thing with Paisley, she forgot more than most of us knew. She is just such a, a wealth of information and such a great resource, and she's so humble, you know, she's not even here today to actually see the, but I'm sure she's at home watching this. So Paisley, it was unanimous. Good going. Yes, Counselor Maves?
I just want to mention too, she works tirelessly for Project Share. She's there all the time and works her heart out.
Here's a lady who, even after she left City Council, you know, some people slow down, and not at all. She took the extra time to speed up, and, and she's unbelievable. She, you'll see her at all the Junior B games, you'll see her. She's all over the community. She's a tireless, and she's a great supporter of our community, so. Well-fitting and unanimous. Okay, item L 2011-12, General Insurance and Risk Management Program, we received the handout, Counselor Thompson?
Uh, thank you. This, in spite of the fact that we only got the information on Friday, this has truly been a learning experience. I really didn't know what reciprocal meant until Friday, until I started getting into this package to see what was actually being recommended. This has been delayed for some time, so that we could come back and make the right decision and see how it could benefit the municipality to the best. The more I look into this, the more concerned that I become with respect to the costs involved in this particular matter with insurance. I'm sure everybody has read the report. The reciprocal means that a, a group of municipalities, a group is together, and they cover off the losses of each other if, if there is some disaster. If you look around the province and you look about entire communities being burnt, you look at some of the disaster with the flooding, you look at, there are some huge costs that could affect this municipality as a result of being involved in a reciprocal. I had this sent to me, and this is the minutes from a meeting from the York Region, who used to be involved in the OMAX reciprocal. And this report is indicating that they are responsible for $4,936,000 as a result of the OMAX assessing them, as a result of the co-op that they have between them. And I'm, I, it also includes a table here. I, I hope that this isn't going to pass tonight, so some other people will have the opportunity to, to read this. But in 2009, they have yet, yet to be assessed, so I think that's the $400,000. In 2008, the premium was $4,441. They were assessed that year $683,714. In 2007, their premium was 38, 30, uh, 3 million, sorry, $3,836,336. They were assessed the same year, $1,246,971. In 2006, the assessment for their insurance premium was 49, $4,900,000, and they again were assessed $1,137,146. The total assessment over a 10-year period is one-third- The total assessment over a 10-year period is one-third of the cost of the initial premium, and as a result, they have pulled out. You usually have to be, through you, to whoever's looking at this, Mr. Beaman. Is this a three-to-five-year period, or how long is this?
It's for 18 months.
18 months. Okay. So, whatever happens, even if we leave after, if there are disasters that come as a result of that 18 months, we are still responsible for our part of the commitment. I think that this is a $100,000 difference, or $98,000 difference with the nearest bidder. I think, and I'm not even suggesting we go there, I'm suggesting that we go back and talk with, not with the reciprocal, but with the other two people to see what we can come back with, with respect to our insurance. I know this runs out at the end of the month, and if you had to have us, this is important enough that I think even a special council meeting for an hour to make sure we make the right decision on this. This personally, with our financial situation, and I know Counselor Mays thinks we got billions of dollars in sewer and whatever, but I've never seen a municipality sell a sewer yet to anybody. So, I think this is a real, serious problem. I don't think that putting the municipality in jeopardy with respect to this is appropriate, and I'd like to, I'd like to hear other comments and discussion from people, but I understand Thorold and Grimsby are also involved, and they're in discussions with other insurance companies at the present time to try to get out of this. I'll ask the, I'll ask the CAO. I believe the city of St. Catherine's was involved in a reciprocal at one point, were they not?
You missed, Mr. Mayor, no. St. Catherine's has actually avoided the reciprocal situation. They don't entertain it. But with respect to a couple of the other ones, and our staff have talked to Grimsby, Fort Erie, Thorold, that are all part of this group, they are going out similar to what we are out now doing, but according to their staff, they're not doing it because they're particularly, that they're unhappy with Omecks. They're just out having a look at the market to see if they can garner a better price.
Okay, I appreciate that. But the whole thing here is, there is no, there is no stability in what we're doing here. This could change. I'll let you have a look at this report from York. Read, excuse me. And just look at the figures there, which are scary with respect to what they have been assessed, and it could be extremely far-reaching. I'd rather us make a decision, choose a company that we can rely on, and we know at the end of the year what our premiums are going to be, rather than putting us in any jeopardy. Particularly when there's hardly any difference, $100,000 in this particular contract is rather insignificant. So, I'll let some other people express their opinion, but I certainly am not in favor of reciprocal insurance.
Mr. Mayor, if I could just comment to the information here. And as our report had indicated, we do realize that this kind of an arrangement is new to this community. It was very difficult for us when we were looking at trying to make the recommendation by leaving $100,000 on the table. We struggled with that fact. Our consultants that we had working with us saw no reason why we should shy away from a reciprocal. When you look at these numbers, what we've been hearing, and these are just from our staff contacting various communities, what they're telling us is that they are relatively satisfied with the service and the protection. And what they're saying is, even with some of these assessments, now this may not be the case in York, but what they're saying is, in most cases, even with the retro assessments that they're receiving, they still believe at the end of the day, they're coming out a little bit better than they would have under conventional insurance. So, we don't have the facts to back that up. That's what our staff are hearing from some of their staff, on contacting a few of them. But you're right, this is new to the community. We tried to outline in the report that there are potential risks. We're not hiding that. But the dilemma we were faced with is when we're looking at the numbers and leaving $100,000 there, there is about a difference. You know, our feeling was that because we'd only be into it for 18 months, we could try it, use that 18 months to see whether or not this product works for us. You're right, if there is any incident in the group that happens during that 18 months, we are on the potential hook for a retro reassessment, and we've, again, we've identified that in the report.
Who was, who had, who was the consultant?
We had, as the report indicates, it's MNP, which was the consultant that we engaged to look at our whole risk management property.
Are they an insurance consultant, or are they an accounting firm?
They're an insurance consultant.
Okay. Anyway.
Anyway, it's, again, we're making, you know, the recommendation that we made, we struggled with this. That's why you didn't get to report till later. We wanted to confirm all the numbers. We admit that this is something new to this community. Quite frankly, we were trying to finalize the recommendation as late as noon on Monday. When we had all the bottom-line numbers, we just felt that, based on the fact that there was about a $98,000 difference, we just couldn't look the other way on that and thought we should come forward and, you know, knew that we'd have some debate on it here at council tonight. But we do realize it's a new product, it's a different product for this community. Some other communities are having good success with it. It's obvious that a few others have not had the same level of success.
And, thank you. I haven't changed my mind. Mr. Beaman?
Yes, I might, there are, I would, depending on counsel's wish, I think there's some matters involving this tender process that would require some, might speak with counsel in camera. There's some legal issues arising from the arrival of this letter that make things a bit awkward. And so, I would like the chance to address counsel in camera before we finalize our vote on this.
Your worship, I would move deferral of this, and we have to have a special meeting to deal with it. I don't have any problem with that. I know there's some timelines involved, but I want to make sure we make the right decision.
Just before we entertain this motion, I think we could achieve what Counsel Thompson has in mind if I get an opportunity to speak with counsel. I mean, if we just step out of chambers, can we recess? Chambers, what's that?
Two minutes.
Can we recess right now for 10 minutes?
Two minutes.
Can we finish our agenda and then go over?
But then we'll have to come back and rise and report? Okay, we're almost finished the agenda. So, can we do that? Can we just hold off? Okay. And last item on the consent agenda is BDD 201105, Scotiabank Convention Center, Will of Counsel?
Your worship.
Moved by Counsel Anone, seconded by Counsel Gates?
No, I want to speak.
Okay, do we have a second or first? So, Counsel Carroll seconded, Counsel Gates?
Thanks very much. I was surprised to see this put in as a, as a report, but I'd like to talk on this issue. I've been talking on this issue for approximately seven months, I would think, since I got on council. And first of all, I'd like to thank Serge for the report. However, the report does not give the citizens of Niagara Falls an accurate picture. The convention center, as of today, is still unfinished. There is one area that is completely unfinished. We have blown a huge opportunity to put the citizens of Niagara Falls to work on this project, but we decided to do a design-built, with nothing in the contract to protect local businesses and utilize local workers. I requested numerous times the economic studies of this project, hoping to see something that says convention centers do make money. Every report that I have seen states the opposite, and I understand that we put some things in place that should help this convention center, where a lot of other conventions are in, and some of them will be in my report here. In this report again, that was put in front of us, it says, "The citizens of Niagara Falls did not contribute to the project." I really think that's an insult to the taxpayers. There is only one taxpayer. Secondly, we are giving up millions of dollars per year in revenue for a city-owned facility. And again, I know that was done to get this thing built, and I've been very clear in saying it was a good idea to get it built, and I think some of the key benefits that are outlined in your report obviously bears that out. Just in this alone, we become a major shareholder, meaning the taxpayers. We're also collecting no development charges. Why design-builts do not work? We have lost control of this facility, even though we own it. There was, and will be, no guarantee of supporting local jobs and local businesses. $70 million, seven-zero, of the opportunity for local workers and businesses left this community and headed to Toronto and Oshawa. The list of the subcontractors, which I can't believe we're being told by a company that we can't get that list, considering that we own it, we pay it, and we should have put something in the, in the tender process to make sure we can. But the list of the subcontractors is here. Please note that everything that I obtained was never given by the project manager or the controller. In fact, they delayed it so much that they gave an answer at this council after they got their payments. One of the responses was comical, saying they were too busy with their final preparation to give me the list. So, what I did is, on my own, without the company that you awarded the work to, and I think it's important to provide this for council, and I don't know who does that, or would you want me to walk around, but this is a list of the contractors that perform the work, the subcontractors. What I don't have, and what I'm trying to get, is a list of the subcontractors, that some of that subcontract work might have been subcontracted out, so I wouldn't have those particular companies. So, I don't know how you want me to handle this, but I think it's important that the council has this list. The counselors have the list? Okay. Thanks very much, Bart, I appreciate it. The fact that the company couldn't provide this for me in seven months really makes me wonder what's going on here. I believe all aspects of the process and the names involved should be transparent and open, as this is a public facility. With that list that you got provided to the council, the sub-trades included roughly 60,000 electrical man-hours at $20 million. It went to Carlo Electric from Oshawa, busting in workers from Toronto. Plumbing and pipe fitting was roughed, 30,000 man-hours, or $10 million, went again to Toronto. Cheap metal, another 30,000 man-hours, or $10 million, went, you guessed it, to Toronto. Sophistically concord. General sprinklers were from Toronto. We have all been advertised to all of Canada as having one of the highest unemployment rates in Ontario. After raising the issues, the Scotiabank Center contracted a significant amount of their work as they moved forward from firms all over the Toronto area, and again, not using local businesses. We are hired a hospitality firm, Centerline, from the United States. My concerns moving forward, I have some. The residents, make that the taxpayers, need to know that convention centers, although this is set up a little different than some convention centers, and I grant that, do not make money. The losses over time will be the responsibility of the residents. And I also understand that the BIA is putting in $1 million per year for 15 years. The question obviously will become what happens after the 15 years. But the thing that really caught my eye on this whole project, other than they wouldn't give me the list, I think, I can't believe we didn't put safeguards in place to make sure that we get the list. We own it, we should know exactly who worked on it, what companies worked on it, make sure that all the rules and regulations were followed, but I guess that's not the case. But the thing that really jumped out at me, Mayor Deodaddy, was about two weeks ago, three weeks ago, there was an article in the Niagara Falls Review, and it had a picture of Kerry Painter, I'm not sure if she's the general manager or the president, and it was very clear that the convention centers, and this is Kerry Painter's, where it's not mine, Kerry Painter was very clear that the convention center do not make money, but everybody around it does. I believe that the design-built and how we did it, I think, was probably not in the best interests of the city. I think there's a lot of things that we could have done different on a design-built, and I certainly hope that in the future, that if we do a design-built, we take a look at taking care of local workers, local businesses, and I certainly hope that even in a design-built, which I didn't find out till today, because I met with people that have done a design-built, you can actually tender the design-built part of it in each one of those trades. And that's kind of interesting, because one of the colleges in the area have done it, and where they thought they had $71 million, in our case, there it was more closer to 40, they were able to commit at $31 million, because every one of those jobs, electrical work and everything, was tendered out, even with the design-built. So, I think some of the things that we did here, and I want to be very clear, because I thought it was for the last six or seven months, I support what we did, I don't support how we got there. And I think in the future, on a go-forward basis, we're going to be talking about the police, the new police headquarters. Hopefully, local workers will get the opportunity to bid on that work and do some of the work there as well. We have to find a way, and this is what's probably eaten me the most for the last six months, we have to find a way to put our children, our grandchildren, and people in this community back to work, and we had a golden opportunity right here to do it, and we chose not to, and I think it was a mistake. And I'm not saying bad about anybody around this thing, but I think on a go-forward basis, let's do it better. Thanks very much.
Thank you, Counsel. Counsel Thompson?
First of all, I guess everything is learning and experience. Anybody who knows anything about tourism and anything about convention centers knows that there's only one or two convention centers in North America that make money. We all know that. One of them is Toronto, and they don't make money on the convention center, they make money on the park market. So, when we've been working on this for the past 25 years, we've certainly known that that was the case. And the idea of this whole thing coming together was the fact that the Falls View BIA stood up and said, "We want this thing to happen, and we're willing to make sure there isn't going to be a deficit." And as a result of that, the other dollars fell into place, and the Falls View BIA and the Victoria Center put up about $16 to $17 million over the first 15 years, so there will not be any deficit. And this building opened, which is unique from most convention centers, with zero debt. And it was a design-built, and I had experience with building two casinos, and we made sure there was letters or terminology in the contract that they had to use local labor. And there were two projects where that happened, and everybody got to work during that period of time. Now, I asked the same question, and Counselor Gates is not unique here. I was up on my feet at least three times during the construction, because I had been approached by people saying, "You know, where's the local people getting involved in this? Where are the local jobs?" And because of this design-build, and because there was no clause in there indicating local people should be utilized to the maximum, as it was previously, then this is the situation. It was a case where they didn't want any municipality, any municipal dollars going into this. They had a fixed amount, and they said, "Here's what we want to spend, and these contractors," and there's only a few of them, "and there's none local ones that have the ability to do that job." They bid on it with the dollars that they had to spend by contacting the trades that they work with, and they were all out-of-town contractors. So, that's probably one of the reasons why it worked out the way it did. It certainly wasn't the way I would like to have seen it happen. We all do things here. In fact, we just made a decision tonight regarding... In fact, we just made a decision tonight, uh, regarding the, uh, the soccer facility. I hope that, uh, when you're working with them on the staff, that there's something in the contract that says, "If you're going to build, you build with, uh, with local labour." Councillor Gates indicated that it's not finished. Uh, during the construction, there was an offer by the contractor to finish off one section of the building at no additional cost, uh, would remain unfinished until such time as, uh, the, uh, BIA or the tourist industry in general was able to finish that off. And there are already discussions about, uh, the need of that facility and how, what an asset it could be. So that was included, was not included in the original, uh, design, but that was an offer by the, uh, contractor to finish off the building, uh, so it was, uh, squared off in a, in a proper manner. And it's a quite a substantial size. Um, in, in looking at, uh, who did participate, because it wasn't a case where everybody was closed out completely with this situation. The, uh, site works were done by Centennial Construction, a local contractor. Uh, the supply of granular, granular by Walker Aggregate and Cotton Hollage. Um, Hollage of the excavated material was done by Cotton Industries again. Uh, Tutstone Landscaping, uh, did all of the landscaping and, uh, and, uh, finishing up with the exterior of the building. Norjan, uh, including the curves and sidewalks, uh, by Alphadome, the asphalt and the pavement markings. Uh, the concrete supplied by Nagra Local Dufferin Ready Mix Plant. Uh, the concrete reinforcement by Salad Steel. Uh, formwork carpenters and labour provided by Nagra Local Union Hall. Raw materials from, for structural steel provided by Salad Steel. Anchor bolts from Nagra Fasteners. Millwork installation from local carpenters' union. Framers, drywallers, et cetera, from the local union. Finished construction cleaning, uh, from local labour union. Uh, local bidders that were invited to bid on projects, uh, Regional Door and Hardware, Design Electronics, uh, Tutstone Landscaping, Saco Construction, Miller Paving, Norjan, Sicarelli, Wellen Fence, Nagra Fence, Farren Signs and Signature Signs. So it wasn't a, a total loss as far as, uh, providing some employment. The idea of, uh, of this, uh, has long been talked about. It's such an asset for the future that fits in with our total tourism picture that, um, it should have been done better. It could have provided more opportunities, but it's a wonderful facility, it's open, it's here, and, uh, it's time to move on with, uh, making it a success. Uh, is it going to cost the municipality money? When it first brought up, in fact, uh, um, former alderman, Phil Patty was here tonight. Every time I would mention it, every time I mentioned the people mover, uh, she would get up and say, "I support them, it's great. No taxpayers' money from Niagara Falls." So that's the way it was accomplished and we're very fortunate because, huh, if it, if we did not get that money, you can be sure the thirty-five million from the province, the thirty-five million from the feds would have gone to other municipalities and, uh, we would, men, without a convention centre. So hopefully, uh, that puts it to bed. Certainly councillor Gates is not wrong. Uh, certainly if we're doing anything in the future, uh, we got to make sure that we take advantage and create those local jobs because that's what it's all about.
Thank you. Any other comments?
First of all, I, I, I think I'll read out exactly because the, uh, when Bonfield told the mayor that they would use local union halls, hiring halls, whenever possible, it is only the ones that were signatory too. And to your point, Wayne, uh, they only used, uh, carpenters, labours and operating engineers. Seventy million dollars of that project left this community, uh, on that issue. And on the design build, Wayne, to your point, and I raised this a number of times and, and maybe I, I wasn't clear enough and I apologize for that, um, all four bidders on this project were very close and somebody would like to stand up and correct me, that's fair. Uh, but the one of the bidders was going to use ES Fox as one of the subcontractors on this particular project, they weren't awarded the job. I, I don't understand that and, and I wasn't here then, uh, but just for your information, Wayne, all four bids were extremely close, even on the design build, and ES Fox, who's a local place, does a lot of good things in this community, uh, um, one of the bidders was going to use ES Fox as, uh, one of their subcontractors, just, and it's a point of information for you. And I do thank you.
Anyway, I'm not, uh, I'm not the expert, I was never involved in any of the discussions. I don't think there was really any discussion around this council table with respect to that, but, uh, there were certainly people involved, uh, from the city and I would like to hear somebody else's comments beside my own and councillor Gates with respect to this and how we can make it better in the future and hopefully, uh, move on.
Well, maybe we can ask Mr. Fellasetti, I do have a question, uh, specifically to design builds, and I know the idea of a design build is you know how much it's going to cost, there's no surprises, but maybe Mr. Fellasetti can, uh, enlighten us in the future, and I agree with what councillor Thompson said and councillor Gates, you make good points. Going forward though, we're learning a lot of lessons. Um, and my question here is, in the future, design builds, can we require at a certain percent be local content in a design bid, um, in a design build bid? Can you, can we ask for that? And maybe we get Mr. Fellasetti to answer.
Well, is the, uh, this project was the first, uh, design build this municipality was involved with, but in terms of supply and services, it'd be up to the municipality. Like, yeah, you can put certain terms into it, uh, but it, if we ever do a design build, uh, that could be a, a clause. With a design build though, it's, it's price stipulated. And I think what the group, what the team didn't want to do was, uh, deal with anything that would, uh, harm the design of the project. I think, uh, we had a stipulated amount of money, we had direction from councils to time that, "That's all you're getting. Do not come back to this council." And I think as councillor Thompson alluded to, this project would never have gotten off the ground because we've studied it for decades. Uh, the model was always that the local municipality would have to contribute funds. And, and it was never going anywhere until the Falls View and the tourist industry stepped up and provided the dollars. We, and that, when they, we got those funds from the private sector, we got the money from the province and the federal government, or else there would have been no project. But yes, you can always look at the terms, you don't want to inhibit the, the, uh, the, the groups that are bidding on the project. In terms of Bonfield, the space that's unfinished was actually extra space that we got through the design. So it was there for future use. So basically what you got was more building than what you paid for. That's what happened with that particular project. And so when we need the space in future, or that group, they have, uh, an extra eight thousand square feet to expand into. Same with basement, that was extra space now that saves the, the operator from building it in the future, from expanding. So the infrastructure is all there. But, uh, yeah, in the future, I guess it, it depends on how we want to proceed with the project. Uh, long-term, uh, in terms of the project, again, uh, the economic spin-off after the third year is about ninety-three million dollars on an annual basis.
No doubt, this is going to benefit our community in a big way. So do we have a motion to receive the document? Do we have one? Oh, it's already on the floor. Okay. All those in favor? Okay, thank you. Uh, motion to recess, oh no, we'll do the bylaws, I'm sorry. We've got two resolutions, uh, motion to move the resolutions, councillor Morocco, seconded by councillor Peter Angelo. All those in favor? Okay?
I'd suggest you go on camera now.
Okay, so we're gonna, can I have a motion for ten, yep. Councillor Morocco, seconded by councillor Iannone. All those in favor? Okay, and we will come back as soon as we're done our in-camera discussion. Okay, and we will come back as soon as we're done our in-camera discussion. I don't see anyone in the room on the camera.
I actually sent you a few shows. Well, I see one of them is on, but I don't know if it's...
That's cool.
Okay. Does everyone know where the CoachCo people are? CoachCo people, come in. On the truck. What's that? Yeah. Let's get my report. Nothing? You guys ready? All right. We're ready to get started. All right, the subject is L 2011-12 General Insurance and Risk Management Program, RFP, that we held with the city, our file number 201175. What is the will of council? Counselor Morocco, then Counselor Wing?
We make a motion to cancel the RFP.
Motion to cancel the RFP process, seconded by Counselor Wing. Is there any discussion on that? Seeing none? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Now, what is the will of council in regard to the insurance? Counselor Carrio, Counselor Iannone?
The staff to negotiate with our existing carrier to cover us for the next year.
Okay. And that was seconded by Counselor Peter Angelo. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Opposed?
I don't like this.
We have one opposed and one declaring a conflict. Okay, it is passed. Now the bylaws.
Motion to introduce the bylaws.
Motion introduced by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. Pardon me?
You gotta ask me if there's a...
Mr. Clerk, are there any additional bylaws or amendments to the bylaws?
Yes, there is an additional bylaw that's in your handouts. It's to execute an agreement with a consultant related to the development charges peer study.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Iarafida. We have a motion by Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor? All right, thank you.
Bylaws 2011-77 to 2011-83, we're at a first time.
Counselor Peter Angelo. Did you want to... Okay, moved for a second time the bylaws. Counselor Peter Angelo, seconded by Counselor Carrio. All those in favor?
Bylaws 2011-77 to 2011-83, we're at a second and third time and passed.
Thank you very much. New business. New business. Counselor Morocco.
Yes, mayor. Just two seconds. I'll make this very, very quick. As we saw from attending FCM, that there was quite a bit of money invested into FCM for the different destinations. And I would just like to make a recommendation, if I could ask the support of the staff that we, our council, that we ask staff to start allocating some money from the next budget, obviously, for 2014, because we will have to do a present, we'll have to go to Saskatoon because it's next year, to see how they do the presentation for when they go to Vancouver to the board. So then Vancouver's 13 and then we're 14. So we do have an obligation as a city to host the board in Vancouver. So we make sure that we have those dollars being put away starting now, so it's not going to hit us with a big lump. And also, we've contacted the mayor of Saskatoon, and he will work with the mayor in letting us know how much the dollars were that they had invested into the conference as well. So if I could just ask the support of the council.
Okay, so you asked for a report back from staff on establishing a, some kind of a funding mechanism to, for the conference in 2014?
Thank you, mayor.
Okay, seconded by Counselor Maves. Is there any discussion on the FCM? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Counselor Thompson?
Very quickly, there's an opportunity for a small entrepreneur to put up an ice cream stand in the Fallsview area. We have a patented bylaw that hasn't been changed for many, many years. It provides some protection for buildings who are paying taxes and protect them from too much infringement in their business or food sales for carts and things. This is restricted to ice cream. I think there's a 200-foot distance that you can't have any business that is selling that. I don't think there's anybody right now who does that in the Fallsview area. I would like to refer this to staff to have a look at it, to see if there's an opportunity to have some summer employment and give an opportunity for a young entrepreneur to start a business.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Iannone.
Please declare conflict, your worship. This guy's contacting me about some locations.
Okay, conflict declared by Counselor Carrio. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Counselor Thompson?
Very quickly, there's an opportunity for a small entrepreneur to put up an ice cream stand in the Fallsview area. We have a patented bylaw that hasn't been changed for many, many years. It provides some protection for buildings who are paying taxes and protect them from too much infringement in their business or food sales for carts and things. This is restricted to ice cream. I think there's a 200-foot distance that you can't have any business that is selling that. I don't think there's anybody right now who does that in the Fallsview area. I would like to refer this to staff to have a look at it, to see if there's an opportunity to have some summer employment and give an opportunity for a young entrepreneur to start a business.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Iannone.
Please declare conflict, your worship. This guy's contacting me about some locations.
Okay, conflict declared by Counselor Carrio. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Counselor Thompson?
Very quickly, there's an opportunity for a small entrepreneur to put up an ice cream stand in the Fallsview area. We have a patented bylaw that hasn't been changed for many, many years. It provides some protection for buildings who are paying taxes and protect them from too much infringement in their business or food sales for carts and things. This is restricted to ice cream. I think there's a 200-foot distance that you can't have any business that is selling that. I don't think there's anybody right now who does that in the Fallsview area. I would like to refer this to staff to have a look at it, to see if there's an opportunity to have some summer employment and give an opportunity for a young entrepreneur to start a business.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Iannone.
Please declare conflict, your worship. This guy's contacting me about some locations.
Okay, conflict declared by Counselor Carrio. Is there any other discussion on the FCM? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Counselor Thompson?
Very quickly, there's an opportunity for a small entrepreneur to put up an ice cream stand in the Fallsview area. We have a patented bylaw that hasn't been changed for many, many years. It provides some protection for buildings who are paying taxes and protect them from too much infringement in their business or food sales for carts and things. This is restricted to ice cream. I think there's a 200-foot distance that you can't have any business that is selling that. I don't think there's anybody right now who does that in the Fallsview area. I would like to refer this to staff to have a look at it, to see if there's an opportunity to have some summer employment and give an opportunity for a young entrepreneur to start a business.
Okay, moved by Counselor Thompson, seconded by Counselor Iannone.
Please declare conflict, your worship. This guy's contacting me about some locations.
Okay, conflict declared by Counselor Carrio. Is there any other discussion on the motion? All those in favor? Okay, it's unanimous. Is there any other new business?
Motion to adjourn.
Motion for adjournment, seconded by Counselor Maves. All those in favor?
You guys wouldn't want to be going home with all the money.
Yes.